It started. Are you recording? So, thank you all for coming to Monday, April 12th, 2021 Albany City Council Work Session. We started at 4:00 PM, so I'd like to call them into order and gave me was a roll call, please.
Yes, Your Honor. Mayor Alex Johnson II.
Present.
Councillors Olson.
Here.
Novak.
Present.
Bartholomew.
Here.
Kupcinski.
Here.
Bessie Johnson.
Here.
Anne Smith.
Here.
All members present, Your Honor.
Thank you very much. Greatly appreciated. So, the city clerk reached out to me and said there's no business from the public. And so, the next agenda item would be public hearings process. But by Jeff Blin, but I understand that Matthew Rutgers is going to do the presentation today. So, Matthew, you have the floor.
Perfect. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. So, yeah, I'm here to bring forward a recommendation from the Planning Commission regarding land use public hearings. So, at the March 1st Public or Planning Commission meeting, the commission discussed potential solutions for improving the efficiencies of public hearings. The commission had noted, depending on the application type, these hearings can be held by Planning Commission, Landmarks Commission, or City Council. And in some cases, the commission and council. With that being said, it's important to note that procedural changes for hearings should be consistent between all the bodies. Otherwise, you could end up with inconsistencies. Planning, just wanted to note the other Planning Commission's ideas are centered around assigning time limits to verbal testimony by the applicant and the public. Not out of the interest of limiting it, but actually focusing it. Planning Commission has recommended the City Council direct staff to conduct a feasibility analysis for implementing these time limits. They also recommend that, once it's complete, the analysis be brought back to the Planning Commission and Landmarks Commission for each of the bodies to make a recommendation for council's consideration. Staff supports these recommendations and asks that you deliberate if desired and if appropriate, direct staff to conduct the feasibility analysis, which will then solicit further input from Planning Commission and Landmarks Commission. With that, I'm here to answer any questions you might have.
Council.
I'll suggest that the two commissions proceed to see, come up with their feasibility study.
I agree.
I agree too.
Okay, thank you so much, Councilor Novak. Councilor Olson had a question?
I don't have a question, just an opinion. And it's probably premature. But I think it's another step in stiff-arming the public. And as we foresee in our future, that we're going to have a harder and harder time to finance our city adequately. I think we are gambling, if we stiff-arm the public, if we have to go to them for financial help. So, as you know, I'm opposed to the idea of limiting the public and talking to us at the City Council. And I appreciate the mayor not cutting people off at exactly 3.00 minutes. As, at least in the past, the school board has done. And I've experienced it, and I've seen our planning director being cut off in mid-sentence, not only mid-paragraph, but mid-sentence to say, okay, quit. But, so I'll probably object when, if this does happen. And I hope we consider that aspect of our representing the public. And I don't know about the rest of you, and I don't know about the committees and the commissions. But my question is, do you consider yourself part of government, or do you consider yourself as part of the public? I consider myself to be part of the public, and I try to do my best to get the government to do what I think is best for the public. So, many times, you can't express yourself in three minutes. I should have timed myself. I'm probably way over three minutes right here. So, that's my comment.
Thank you, Councilor Olson. Any other councillors have any comments or thoughts? So, if everyone's in favor of them coming back with the information that they've requested to come back with, a thumbs up would be fine. And we can have them go off and do their work and bring back some information for us to consider. I think we have direction. Matt, Matthew, please go back and bring us some information on your study. So, we can make some informed decisions, once you've had your consultations and your feasibility study.
Perfect. Thank you, sir.
Most welcome. Next on the agenda is Weekly Debris and Service by Julie Jackson from Public Services. I think she has a presentation also with verbal comments, so she will be doing that now. Did you go ahead and start your slideshow and then share that with us, so you can start your time? There we go. Perfect. So, you have the floor, Mrs. Jackson?
You're on mute.
Ah, got it. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right, good. So, without taking too much of your time, which I appreciate today, I am back. Some of you will recognize this request or this conversation. And I'm back again to talk about weekly organic service. But we have, I think, some pretty compelling evidence to talk to you about. I think that the question you're probably asking is, why now? Why is this a good time to do that? And I think one of the most important reasons that we want to do this is that our customers ask us for it constantly. I cannot tell you, when people move from another area, from Lebanon, or Salem, or Corvallis, or the Portland area, they're almost shocked that we don't have weekly yard debris service and that we don't allow food waste composting in Albany. So, we're asked a lot. In fact, the last time we asked about this, in 2016, we conducted a survey of about 869 customers. Those were the customers we have had email addresses for at the time. We have significantly more now. And we asked them, which, we did two surveys, but you said several councillors felt that we didn't make it clear enough what we were asking. So, the second survey was one question. Would you support an additional $3 per month to have weekly yard debris collection, including food scraps? And 54% of our customers said yes. Of those 869 customers said yes. The options were yes or no. I would tell you that anytime you can get people, more than half of the survey group, to respond yes to, would you pay more money? That's a pretty good outcome. We currently have more than 500 homes in Albany who are paying an additional $9.93 per month to have an additional yard debris cart, in essence, giving them that weekly service. Another great reason is that the DEQ estimates that about 25% of residential waste, what goes into the trash, is food scraps. It's really sad, and that's something we need to work on as well, not wasting so much food. But that is a pretty good volume of material that's currently going in the trash. And then, the other option is this. We added in January a 65-gallon cart to the options for our customers. Prior to that, it was just a 32-gallon cart or a 90-gallon cart. So, we added one in the middle. We had a customer request to do that, and you guys approved that. I think it was a great addition. With the addition of that 65-gallon cart, I think there is a lot of ability for customers to have weekly food debris collection and yard debris collection, and reduce their carts. So, some people would have to pay a little more, and some people would save money on average. Not moving now. There we go. So, I think there's a better way to do what we're doing. And one of the things that I think you need to be aware of is that the DEQ has goals for cities or waste sheds. In our area, our waste shed is Lynn County. But cities are responsible for demonstrating what they're doing every year to increase food waste collection, to increase recycling, those kinds of things. So, by 2025, DEQ has set a goal to collect organic material, to increase that by 25%. And cities are responsible for that. So, composting organic material from the kitchen is just a better way to do it. It takes materials, instead of putting it in the landfill, we can create a beneficial soil amendment. And I don't know how many of you have used compost in your yards and gardens, but it reduces the need for water. It can reduce the need for herbicides and pesticides, reduces soil erosion, and reduces greenhouse gas emissions by making compost over putting it in the landfill. This is a really interesting chart. And I think last year, I told you that what we were seeing as a result of COVID was a lot of yard debris and a lot more waste homes. And this chart just demonstrates that. So, I put yard debris tons from 2016, for the last five years, through 2020 on this chart. And that top blue line is 2020. With the, there's a lighter blue line being 2016, and then they're pretty much in order after that. But I think what you can see is that we hit an all-time high in May of last year, an all-time high until this year, I will tell you, in May of last year. And I told you that yards were going to be beautiful in Albany, and I think they are. But we are collecting more yard debris than ever before. So, in those months, April, May, June, and then into the fall, when usage is really high, it's increased. So, the increase from 2019 to 2020 was 13%, and we've increased, just based on the first three months of this year, we've increased by 15% again already. So, a 25% increase overall. And I know that a lot of times, I get asked the question, well, could we just do it in the months when we need it? But I think if you look at even our lowest months, which are January and February, we collect over 500 tons of organic material, and then up to almost 2,000 or over 2,000 in the peak month. But you can see by March, we're on a pretty steep trajectory going up. In the heat of the summer, in August, we go down, but then we start right back up in the fall. So, these carts are being used year-round. And of course, when you can add food waste to those carts, it increases the amount that they're used and they're added year-round. So, I just put those up in numbers, and you can see that in 2021, we, in March, we collected 1,166 tons of yard debris. That is by far and away the largest march we've had in the, I don't know if it's ever, but certainly in the last six years. We are just seeing more and more residential organic material. And the other thing I can tell you is, we're seeing more waste in residential service across the board, more trash. These same numbers apply to trash, probably 25% increase. They apply to, and they apply to yard debris. The yard debris cart becomes the organics cart. That's what we call it. We have to pick it up weekly to collect food, and that's just about being good neighbors. Two weeks is too long to leave food sitting in a cart in front of your neighbor's garage, or, you know, so that it doesn't smell. And we find that a week seems to be just fine. We had a lot of concerns about odors when people can put food in, because as you can see from this picture, you can put all food scraps in, including proteins, including fish carcasses and bones. It all goes in and goes through the mix to be composted. And so, we need to pick that up weekly for that food to go in the cart. And that's really the reason why for that. The cost would be $2.95. Out, Mayor Johnson, did you have a question?
I said I did. I know in 2019, or yeah, 2019, I attended a night out with a police officer. And one of the communities we stopped in, they had an issue with mice because of the compost they had. Will you be, well, is that something you've heard about constituents, your customers?
Well, I'm not sure. We heard about some mice in a neighborhood that was being attributed to our recycling facility. It was later determined that that wasn't the case. But, you know, the compost bins, we just, we have a lot of experience. We've been doing this in Corvallis since 2010. And we just don't see that those ever really came to fruition, those concerns that people had about pests, rodents, odors. We just didn't see those come to fruition. If you, we have a lot of ways to help people, you know, line the cart with a piece of cardboard, throw in some baking soda if it bothers you. We have a lot of options for people, a lot of ways to help them. But pests are not really as big a problem as a lot of people think they would be. But that certainly was a concern in the communities where we added it.
Right, thank you.
Sure. So, $2.95 a month, that would be doubling organic service. And one of the things, I know a previous councillor really didn't like the argument that it's convenient for customers because they don't have to remember which week is yard debris week. But what I can tell you anecdotally is, our customers think that's a really important reason. They want to put their yard debris cart out the day, the week after they've been able to work in the weekend, because the weather was nice, not two weeks from then. And I know that, I have two yard debris carts at my house, because I can't get it all in, and I want to be able to work in the yard when it works for me. So, the other thing I think that's important to remember is that it can help with those stormwater issues, you know. I can get all my leaves in my yard debris cart. I can put them in the street too, if I want to. But we think it can really help keep leaves from sitting in the street for that two-week window while they're waiting for a leaf pickup. I mean, there are just a lot of ways that this can help with the city as well. And then, the other thing I just want to go back to is that, you know, residential waste hasn't increased in volume across the board. And that's not really, it's really changing our rate structure. So, when we have a commercial customer who doubles the amount of waste they create or gives us 25% more, they pay for that extra service. At residences, it doesn't work that way. There's just a flat fee. So, I don't think any of us could have foreseen what was going to happen in COVID, or ever would we have thought that we were going to see that much more waste. But what we think is, it has not changed in 2021 so far, and more people are back to work. But we think there'll be a lot of people who work from home. We think people have decided they like working in their yards. They're recycling more than ever. And I think doubling the service, allowing people to kind of level-set their services. So, they're going to take maybe 20% of what goes in their trash cart, and they're going to put it in yard debris. That can really help with this. Mayor Johnson?
The councillor Novak had her hand up earlier.
I'm sorry, I didn't see that. I can't see her.
It's okay. It's okay. My question was addressed. Thank you. That's why I took it down. Thank you, Mayor Johnson.
Yes, Julie, long range. This is kind of tangential to this discussion we're having right now. Are you seeing anything on the horizon that's starting to change vis-à-vis all the trash that was going to, quote-unquote, recyclable stuff going to China? Where that got just severely locked down, and I haven't read anything about it for months now, anything happening on that front?
Yeah, that's a great question. So, I think the thing I can report to you that is really positive and a great outcome from that China SWORD initiative is that we are seeing lots more options for domestic markets for recyclable material, and that's just good news to everybody. I think that's great. And then, the other piece, the other thing that's happening, we're following very closely, is that there is legislation right now moving through in Salem, and it would create what they're calling EPR programs, so Extended Producer Responsibility. And I think what you're going to see in the next two to five years is a complete overhaul of the recycling system in Oregon. You'll see some producers of material having to take responsibility for the end-of-life of that material. Very specifically, the plastics industry, which I think we all, for a really long time, wanted to see. So, that is moving along. And, you know, one of the things that we do, I mean, I testified for one of those bills. And I think that, you know, we follow that very, very closely, because it will be complicated, and we want to get on top of that before it actually hits the public. But yeah, lots of trade.
I did read that, I think it's up in Salem, that they're talking about having a basic common design for the label on it. So, you don't have to sort through six or seven different numbers to determine what is recyclable or not, because most of the stuff basically isn't. So, if they come up with a common number, that if you have that number on it, it's going to be automatically recyclable, and everything else wouldn't be, so.
That's the truth in labeling portion of that bill. It's Senate Bill 582. And specifically, the part I testified about, because we spend so much time talking about those chasing arrows and what they really mean and don't mean.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, this is really all I have for you. I just wanted to lay it out, and I hope if you have questions for me, you will feel free to ask.
So, I do have a question for you. Oh, go ahead, councillor Johnson.
Okay. Julie, I have two things. First thing is, do you, does Republic Service, do they accept electronics, things like that? Or where is, do you know a good place to take them, like TVs or computers?
Yes. So, that, and that's a great example of an EPR, that the Oregon E-Waste Program is an Extended Producer Responsibility Program. We are one of the drop-off sites. So, we have moved that to our Source Collection site, which, the best place I can tell you, the best way I can tell you how to get there is, it's right behind where the Oberto's Red Building used to be. That was recently torn down. It's right behind there. You go in, we had to put them as a part of state law. We had to put those undercover. And we also, at our hauling yard site, we had just too many people shopping in those bins, and we wanted your electronics securely. So, we have moved those to Source, and you can go Monday through Friday from 8:00 to 5:00 and drop those off at no charge to you. The producer pays for that.
Okay, that is good. I've got a bunch of old computers and a TV and stuff. And then, the other, on a side note, and I know that everyone's going to laugh, but is it a requirement that whoever makes your garbage carts have to put the loudest wheels on that they can?
No, it isn't. You know, it is a requirement for us that they contain a certain percent of recycled material, and that is a plastic material. And it's what I used to call, when I was in college, my husband and I were newly married, and there were big wheels all over our apartment complex, and it's the same noise. I know just what you mean.
Yeah, you know, later at night, you think, oh, shoot, I forgot to borrow the garbage. So, you're in your pajamas, and you think, okay, now I'm going to hurry up. You know, everybody in the neighborhood knows you're taking out your garbage, you know. It's just funny. It's just funny.
I'll talk to our cart supplier about that.
Really? The silencers on them. Thanks.
Councillor Bartholomew has a question or comment?
It's more of a comment about, because you raised the comment about pests. And I have been composting for years with one of those composters. And if I layer the compost with green matter and then food waste and then green matter, it has no smell. It works great. So.
Thanks. I agree. I will tell you, we do have people who freeze their yard, their food waste, and then the night before collection, they're running out in their pajamas, making noise, and putting that frozen stuff in. There are a lot of tricks we've learned over the years, and a lot of funny stories from people, but some of them work. Like I said, pests are, don't seem to be the issue.
Well, I just like to thank my councillor Kupcinski for waking me up, letting me know that I haven't taken my trash out in the morning.
I wish he'd been at my house last week.
Okay, is that everything, Julie?
That is all I have. I don't know how you'd like me to proceed with this, but those are really the main points that I wanted to bring to you.
Will you be bringing this back to us on Wednesday evening?
I will be. I will be making a formal request.
Well, councillors, are you comfortable bringing her back, bringing Julie back for her presentation on Wednesday evening? It looks like everyone, councillors.
Yeah, I was just going to say, I think that's a good idea, so that we can mull over and maybe ask some people and stuff too, you know, their ideas of it, you know. Even back in 2016, it looks like 57% did, you know, agreed to do it weekly. So, this will give us a chance to discuss it a little bit. And so, yeah, I'd say definitely bring it back.
One of the other things I would really suggest is thinking through when you'd like that to happen. You know, a couple of options are, you know, July is halfway through the year, and that could be a starting point. It requires us to buy two more trucks, so it would take us till then. But the other option would be in August, when we start going up again, or September. I think the leaf season is really an opportune time, and I think it's easier for folks if they get an increase on their bill, if they're getting something for it. In this case, I think many, many people will be grateful to have that extra service and really appreciate it.
So, could you bring back a recommendation on Wednesday, and what's the optimum time for that?
I can have it ready as soon as you would like it.
Thank you.
Sure.
We'll see you Wednesday.
Thanks for your time.
Thank you so much, Julie. I appreciate it.
Thanks.
So, the next discussion on the agenda for 4:00 PM, scheduled for, is Water Sewer Stormwater Utility Rate Report by Director Beck. by Director Bailey and, uh, information on pages three through fifteen. Uh, who's going to do that presentation? Director Bailey's here with us. So, your floor, Director Bailey.
Thank you. I have to, I'm gonna attempt to do this. Let me make it big.
So do your slideshow first, then share it. It'll be easier.
Well.
There you go.
One would think.
I do Zoom all the time.
I, okay, it's there.
Alright.
Um, well, thank you. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council for, thank you for spending some time with me today. And I will apologize again. I seem to do this all the time. This is going to be kind of a long presentation. But, um, this is the annual Public Works Utility Rate Presentation where we talk about all three of our water utilities, how they're doing and, um, how we anticipate they'll be doing over the next five years or so. So this presentation will be broken into three sections. First, I'll give you an overview of what the revenue that we collect in our water sewer and stormwater utilities pays for. Then we're gonna, I'm going to show how the revenue is or is not keeping pace with our, um, targets. And then finally, we're going to look at rate projections for the next five years. And I'm looking off to the side, so I can kind of see your faces and I can see my notes. So I'm not, uh, trying not to be rude, but don't want to miss anything. So, um, start first with, uh, where does all the money go? And I should say, there's a comprehensive discussion of what I'm going to be covering in your council memo that was in the packet. But if you have questions as I go along, please, um, pipe up. So, um, I mentioned in the Public Works Presentation at the council retreat that, um, essentially the council deliberates on the desired level of service they want to achieve in the community. And then they tell us what they would like us to do. And we go off and do research and work to try to accomplish that level of service with within the funding that we have available. When the funding is not adequate to reach or maintain our desired level of service, then we come back to council and and try to discuss the best path forward. In the water utilities, um, our revenue goes to one of three places. Our first obligation is to pay for our debts. So first, we program funding toward debt payment. Next, we, um, work to keep our existing existing systems functional. So the second thing we allocate money toward is operational maintenance costs. And then finally, with the funding we have left over, we fund capital investments. I'm going to go into a little bit of detail on each one of these. So, we try to accomplish our work without taking on additional debt. But sometimes, uh, the needs are beyond our ability to pay for things as we go and we have to seek additional resources. We currently have three sources of debt in our water utilities. In the drinking water fund, we have an existing debt that was taken out in order to construct the Albany-Millersburg Water Treatment Plant and some other capital facilities. The annual payment here is one point nine two million dollars and that debt will be paid off in twenty thirty-four. In the sewer fund, we have two loans. First is the loan that was taken out to fund the construction of the Albany-Millersburg Water Reclamation Facility and Talking Water Gardens. This loan was refinanced a few years ago to take advantage of improved rates. And the current annual payment is four point seven million dollars and that will be paid off in twenty thirty-two. The final debt obligation is another, uh, Clean Water State Revolving Fund Loan that was, um, we recently took out to construct improvements on the Riverfront Interceptor, including the new lift station enforcement on Water Avenue. That project was just recently completed and we're finalizing the loan documents and will expect to make the first payment on that loan this summer. I want to mention that anytime we have a need in the utilities that exceeds our ability to pay for it with our, um, standard revenue, we try to find the least cost solution. In some cases, we can break really expensive projects into phases that we can accomplish over time. But that only works when we have projects that are something that can be phased in and when we have the time to do that. Um, example of that would be the Cox Creek Interceptor Project in the Sewer Fund, which we've broken into, I don't know, nine or ten phases that will be done over several years. When we can't find a solution that allows us to get our work done, we talk with the finance department and we look for the best option. And so in these cases, um, it's, uh, was issuing some water bonds originally to pay for the water, um, capital projects or applying for low-interest loans. Our next obligation is to pay for our O and M requirements. O and M includes personnel, materials and capital maintenance, uh, on our existing facilities as well as regulatory requirements. Timely and sufficient investment in operational needs can save money in the long run by reducing the risk of system failures, emergency repairs or regulatory problems. I'm going to go into O and M aspects of each of the three water utilities. First up is sanitary sewer system. All of the wastewater generated by our residential, industrial and commercial customers travels through a network of pipes and lift stations to one point, the Water Reclamation Facility. This is the single point of treatment for all of the wastewater from Albany and Millersburg. In addition to the WRF, we have thousands of pieces of sewer infrastructure lifted here, all of which have to be maintained. In the last fiscal year, the WRF treated over three billion gallons of wastewater, uh, before returning it clean water to the Lamont River. The staff has also implemented a series of energy projects that we expect to, um, will save us about a hundred thousand dollars in energy costs next year. Um, we installed a person counter at Talking Water Gardens last year. And so we've registered fifty-five thousand visitors in less than twelve months. Um, so we're pretty proud of that. In the collection system, we continue to clean and inspect our pipe. We, um, got through thirty-five miles of pipe last year out of the over two hundred miles or approximately two hundred miles that we have. Collections also responds to, um, those line locates. When you see the white paint on the ground for locating, our sewer crew goes out and locates the city infrastructure, um, as well. There's some pretty pictures. So we have, um, planting at Talking Water Gardens, which was clearly pre-COVID. Um, and then a couple of shots of our water reclamation facility, which is a remarkably clean facility. If you've ever gotten a chance to tour it. Um, and then finally, one of our operators doing some televising on our sewer pipes. Onto the water system. Again, we have a number of physical assets in the system that we operate and maintain, many of which are listed here. I'll point out the dam and its associated structures, as well as the San Tiam Albany Canal's pretty unique uh, series of facilities that the city of Albany owns and maintains. We also have two water treatment plants, also pretty unique for a city of our size to have two drinking water facilities. And then, of course, we have thousands of pieces and parts in the distribution system that all have to be maintained. Last fiscal year on the canal, we did brush cutting on the entire canal, both sides, um, which is a remarkable amount of work. Um, we generated some electricity at our hydropower plant. The water plants produced over two billion gallons of water. And they do a number of in-house water quality tests, um, required by regulations and also to operate the treatment plants, um, properly. We also do a whole lot of sampling and analyzing of water in the drinking water system to make sure that we're, um, providing clean and, uh, water for our community. And we repair, maintain, install, replace, um, lots of stuff. Water service lines, meters, valves, hydrants. Um, we do leak detection with little, uh, sonic headphone things, which is very cool. And, um, we manage over seven thousand four hundred cross connection devices, also known as backflow prevention devices. Some dramatic pictures here of the drinking water system. So, first on the left, unfortunately, we had a rough year on the canal last year. Um, and we have, uh, two areas of major bank failures that are going to have to be repaired this summer. Um, we also had a car accident that was very dramatic. Normally, when a hydrant is hit, it will break off above a shut-off valve. And so you don't get these fountains, but this one broke in such a way that we had this, you know, police chase type fountain going on. But then on the bottom, a more typical water repair with the operator up to his eyeballs and dirty water. And then, um, pictures of so summer maintenance on the canal. So they, we essentially walk, have staff who walk down the canal with chainsaws, um, in the summer to clear brush. And then in the bottom, replacing of drinking water treatment filters at the AM plant, so. And last but not least, um, here is some current information on the stormwater system. Like the other two utilities, we have thousands of individual pieces of infrastructure in the stormwater system. But we only began collecting revenue to maintain the system in two thousand seventeen. Last year, we, um, continued our efforts to get through cleaning and inspecting the entire pipe system. We're up to seventy-four percent of the system that has been inspected at this point. Um, I'll point out that we don't have funding to perform planned capital maintenance. So the capital repairs you see here were emergency repairs that were funded out of our regular operating funds. Um, let's see. Also, I want to touch on the street sweeping picture down at the bottom. And street sweeping definitely has a role in transportation safety and in terms of getting debris off the roadway. But we also account for it in our stormwater program because it removes sediment and associated contaminants before it can get into the storm pipes and out to the river. So, uh, it's an important part of what we do in stormwater. More pictures. Um, on the left is a big spill on the Ellsworth Street Bridge. That's part of stormwater response. We're obligated to keep spills out of the storm system and waters of the state. So in this case, we dried off the spill and then swept it up and removed it rather than washing it down the closest storm grain, which is, uh, generally frowned upon. Do not wash spills down your storm grain if you can avoid it. Um, and then a couple of pictures of some debris and pipes. Debris and pipes is a problem in stormwater, the storm system, because it limits the capacity of those pipes to carry storm flow and then that can create upstream flooding and other problems. And then finally, some planting work at one of our large stormwater facilities in town. Okay, so that's an overview of what we do with the funding we receive in those utilities. Are any questions about O and M before I move on? Can't really see any, everybody, so pipe up if you do. Okay. So, why consider a rate adjustment? All right, so each year we look at our three funds compared to our expenditure targets and we analyze where we are and what, if any, rate increases we would need to keep on target. There's typically three major reasons why we would consider a rate adjustment. Inflation, of course, that can affect both operating and capital costs. Particularly in operating budgets, we look at increases in personnel, which could be due to increases in pay and benefits, some of which are negotiated and we're obligated to provide under collective bargaining agreements. Um, inflation also affects some of our key materials and supplies, such as chemicals in the drinking water and wastewater treatment plants. The cost of metal pieces in water can also be quite volatile. Regulatory compliance can also affect our expenses. Um, we'll have a new permit pretty soon under the, um, Municipal Separate Storm Sewer System or MS four program. That's going to cost quite a bit of money to implement. And also in the sanitary sewer fund, we just have been, um, contacted by DQ and started negotiating a renewal of our discharge permit. It's going to be a very expensive process, which will take at least a couple of years. So we've budgeted for that, um, beginning with the next biennium. And then finally, drinking water comes with regulations that, um, require us to conduct, um, routine and then some extra special sampling and monitoring in order to comply with the, uh, Safe Drinking Water Act. So, all of that can have, um, quite a bit of a cost. And then the last need, of course, is capital projects. As you saw recently in the draft CIP, there's a long list of capital needs in the water utilities. And part of our responsible management of our infrastructure is planning for timely capital work. And we do that to repair, replace and expand our systems as we need to. So sticking with capital projects for a second, um, several years ago, um, the council discussed with staff appropriate capital funding targets for water and sewer. And in more recent years, we've discussed, uh, very small capital funding target in stormwater. Um, as I mentioned earlier, the department first programs in debt payment and then O and M costs. And then once all that's budgeted, whatever's left over is what goes to capital. And we shoot to have this much money left over and targeted for capital each fiscal year. In sewer, um, our existing funding is accomplishing the level of investment that we would like to have. The capital funds are paying for, uh, major capital projects as well as ongoing perpetual life replacement program for the collection system. Prior to developing this method of funding, routine investment in the capital in the collection system was virtually non-existent. And so as a result, we had major pipe failures that created sinkholes over sewer lines and affected customer service, um, routinely. Those problems have been virtually eliminated through a targeted asset management pipe replacement program. And although we've made great progress, we still have a number of pipe segments that need to be replaced. We use a national, um, coding system that assigns a four-digit code to each pipe segment based on its structural condition. And so pipes with condition codes beginning with five are considered failed. Those that begin with four are classified as likely to fail within ten years. And we have twenty-four miles of those in our system. Uh, this pie chart shows the relative number of pipe segments in each condition code from one through five. So although we still have quite a bit of work to do, we've steadily improved our pipe ratings by funding this annual pipe replacement program. Uh, I like this graph because it shows the decrease in linear feet of pipe in worst condition. It's pretty dramatic, um, demonstration. So over here in two thousand thirteen, we had almost ninety thousand linear feet of pipe that was classified in that category of five. And over time with investment, we've brought that down to just almost forty thousand linear feet. So, more than half. And then the hashed section shows the cumulative amount of feet that we've replaced in the system. So that, uh, those two, uh, sort of shapes correlate with each other. But we've made a significant, uh, improvement in the collection system. And this is an example of what targeted, consistent investment will do in terms of improving your system. Over in water, we, um, also are doing okay. We, um, have had regular investment in targeted replacement of the worst pipes in the water system. And so our water loss percentage is approximately nine percent, which, um, some of you may remember twenty years ago when we started talking about this, our water loss percentage was up around the thirty percent mark. Water loss is, um, the volume of water that you make at your drinking water treatment plants, but that you don't put to proper use. So it's not sold or used for firefighting or something like that. It's lost through leaks, um, and other sources. So nine percent is a really great number. Ten percent is the industry target. Um, we continue to refine our asset management system for water and we've added a capital reserve program to fund the replacement of treatment membranes, which are required to be replaced about every ten to twelve years. Um, last time, you may remember, we took four years to replace them at about five hundred thousand dollars a year. So a total of two million dollars. So we're trying to save over time to pay for that. And the stormwater system, so the stormwater rate that we currently have was not designed to fund a capital program, except for a very small amount of funding, about four hundred fifty thousand dollars a year, that is intended to pay for the stormwater portion of major street capital projects. Currently, the street fund pays for the stormwater improvements that are associated with the street project. And in trying to relieve the street fund of some of that burden, this, uh, stormwater rate includes money to pay for stormwater part of street projects. I hope that's clear. It's a little confusing. Um, let's see. We have a, um, updated stormwater master plan we've been working on for several years. We'll be talking to the We'll be talking to the council about that next month. And that's a major milestone in our ongoing effort to properly maintain and fund the system. But until the funding in stormwater reaches a point where we can program ongoing proactive capital maintenance projects. We're going to continue to operate in a reactive mode to street flooding and stormpipe failures because we just don't have the funds. So we're not funding capital projects, but we're still doing a lot of work in assessing the system. To date, as I said, we have inspected about seventy four percent of the pipe system. And we our goal is to do twenty percent a year, so we should be through the system within the next two years. Seventy four percent of the pipe system represents a little over a hundred miles that have been raided. And we have fourteen miles of pipe that are classified as failed or likely to fail. We also have major root and debris problems that mean we need to create a routine maintenance and cleaning program. It's important to note that stormpipes are different than sanitary sewer pipes. They're typically larger and they have many more open inlets into them from the streets. Every grate and inlet you see in the street goes into a stormpipe which goes directly to the river. They also have not been maintained, as I've already discussed, and as a result, the bad stormpipes are really, really bad. The worst storm pipe section has a condition code that's eleven times worse than the worst sanitary pipe. So we have a lot of work to do in the storm system. Here's a pie chart of the condition of stormpipes. So while we have a number of lines that are in good shape, there are many that need to be addressed and there are still twenty five percent roughly that have not been surveyed yet. So we have a limited amount of capital funding in stormwater rates right now. And the need for capital investment is in a few different categories. First, we have capacity needs where we have pipes that are undersized. So the stormwater master plan that we'll be bringing to council to you soon. Will help identify these pipe segments that are undersized for current conditions and for future build out conditions. The cost associated with those needs is is not known right now, but we'll share that with council as soon as we have that. We know from the pipe assessment work that we have at least twenty four million dollars of investment just to repair what's currently in the ground. Based on its condition, but currently the only funding we're targeting is that four hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year towards street projects. So here's the slide that everyone will remember. So this is the conclusion of our analysis of where we are and where we need to be in our rates rate revenue. Based on our forecast for the next biennium, we're recommending a three and a half percent increase in the sewer rates. And a three and a half percent increase in water as well as a seventeen percent increase in stormwater. I want to caution everyone that seventeen is a large number compared to the other two utilities. But because the current rates in stormwater are very low to water and sewer. It does not work out to a large dollar amount increase for the typical residential customer and I'll show you that in just a second. The sewer rate increase is primarily responding to inflation. Water also is all of them are responding to inflation, but we're still building toward a capital target in water. That was set by council and we should meet that capital target on January first, twenty twenty four. So we're in okay shape there. The storm runner increase includes inflation, but also it keeps us on track. To have the funds necessary to implement the permit and pay for those street projects. This was direction from the council in 2018 after a great deal of discussion on this topic. And I want to just emphasize the critical need for stormwater increase. Because if we don't continue to stay on track for our revenue target, we risk not being able to implement the permit and regulatory consequences. Mary Johnson, did you have a question?
Yes, the permit, is this the MS four or which permit are we talking about?
This is the MS four permit.
And that's annual or biannual, what is that?
So the permit is a five year permit. And excuse me, the revenue target is one, we estimate about a million dollars a year to implement the permit. So. We will know more once we get towards the end of implementing the permit, if that estimate was high or low. But we just getting started, we'll be applying for the permit soon. So that's an annual amount that we need to manage the permit.
Thank you.
Counselor Olson.
Olson first, and Councilor Novak second.
You're going to raise the rates three and a half percent. When was the last time that we raised the rate?
Last year, and I'll show you that in a future slide.
Okay, so that's three and a half percent per year.
Um, yes, and I I'll have the five percent, oh, I'm sorry, the five year forecast as well.
So is that, is has our inflation been about three and a half percent per year? Seems like that's a little high.
Well, the increase in operating costs has been, we we estimate about five percent per year. Because of personnel cost and benefit costs, the three and a half percent here is primarily to keep our O and M costs on track. It also has to do with the debt payment and the fact that we do not have adequate SDC revenue. To pay for debt, so I'll talk about that in a second as well. Counselor Novak?
Yes, my question had to do with just verifying this is an unfunded mandate. Is that, am I remembering this correctly or I just needed a little refresher there?
Well, unfunded mandate is a technical legal term that, but yes, so the permit does come from the state. As they enforce the Clean Water Act. So it is via the Clean Water Act delegated to the state of Oregon. And it's required for cities who have a population greater than fifty thousand people.
And was there, you had mentioned earlier that some cities had gotten an offset? I I can't remember if it was with regard to the water or the sewer or specifically the stormwater. An offset may not have been the correct, the correct term. I remember when we talked about this once earlier and you mentioned that there were some cities who. Oh, I can't think of the word, who had. I, the way, the way I understood it was gotten a bit of a break and didn't have to pay as as much in the with regard to the permit. Does that make sense? Do you remember?
Um, I don't remember.
Or maybe I'm remembering it incorrectly, so.
Um, the only thing I, I don't remember exactly that description. I will say that this permit was issued originally in, probably I get this wrong, two thousand eighteen, I'll say. And a group of us did decide to file a suit against DEQ over this permit because we felt. It was not implementable. And we've talked with the council about that lawsuit over time and.
That's what I'm remembering.
Yeah, all I'll say is that we, we are anticipating applying, there were, we reached a settlement. Agreement with DEQ and the modified permit has been issued. And we're waiting for that process to finish, we'll end up applying for that permit unless something goes sideways.
Thank you, that's, that's it specifically, thank you.
Okay. Okay, so let's see, where was I in my notes? Okay, so I'm going to go to the next slide. So this slide shows what a single family residential customer. Who is, that is using eight hundred cubic feet or eight units of water a month would pay. So it breaks it out by sewer, water and stormwater. And you can see their monthly charge for each utility and their daily charge for each utility. And on this slide, you can see that the stormwater rate increase, although it's seventeen percent, is just forty cents. So the percentage number is a little frightening, but the total dollar number is less than the other two utilities. And I'll mention that eight hundred cubic feet is a measurement we use because that's what is used statewide to compare municipalities. The typical single family residential customer in Albany uses six hundred cubic feet a month or six units of water a month. So again, although residential rates are relatively easy to talk about as a group, it still varies depending on how much water each household uses.
Chris, this is Bessie, I'm just wondering, if you can go back a slide.
Sure.
What about the people who only have, use, only have sewer? They have wells and so they don't use the water.
Okay.
Is that still the same increase?
Um, so the rate will still be increased, those customers, and I might have to have Jeff Babett bail me out. But if you're a sewer only customer on a well, you are charged, I believe, for based on eight units a month. We do have some language in the ordinance that allows you to meter your well. Usage and if you feel like you're being charged for too many units, you can prove to us that you're using fewer units. And then we will adjust your bill, but as far as the rate increase, they would only pay the sewer portion of this bill. And that would still be increasing by three and a half percent.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, so one of the reasons we do this presentation altogether is because council requested that they see, could see the entire impact of all three utilities. So. The, although the. Rate changes for each utility happen at different times throughout the year. When you combine them all together after they're all would would be implemented, this would be the result. So the first rate to go into effect would be sewer, which would be July first, twenty twenty one. Water would be January first, twenty twenty two, and then stormwater March first, twenty twenty two. After, at that point, the typical single family residential bill would go from a hundred twenty seven dollars thirty five cents to one thirty three seventeen. Which is a combined increase of four point six percent. This is a chart that shows comparisons with other communities in Oregon. And it has been updated to include these proposed rate increases. The communities closest to Albany geographically are highlighted here. Albany is here at number nine in the state. And we're behind all of our neighbors except Corvallis, which is way down here. In terms of the dollar total utility bill charge per month. This table does not reflect any increases that any of these other communities might be planning to make because we don't really know about those. The final table I have for you is a sample of what non-single family residential customers would pay. It's very difficult to try to figure out what commercial and industrial customers might pay. Because as a class, they all are different and they tend to use water in different ways. So this is what we've done in previous years, we take some actual customers in Albany and make them anonymous. And show you the impact of these rate increases on their monthly utility bill. And compare with Salem, Corvallis and Eugene. Well, they're all anonymous except City Hall, you can see City Hall there. Okay. So that's it, any questions on the rate increases before I move to the five year forecast section?
Can you go back to that previous slide?
Sure.
Thank you. I'm, I'm looking at the comparison between. Apartment complex Salem is thirty two forty five, we're at forty four sixty eight. And so we're higher than Salem, Corvallis and Eugene projected to be, right? And then for a large retailer, we're almost double. And the large care facility, you know, in two thousand roughly eighteen hundred. Average industrial were like six or fifty six, fifty six thousand, fifty six hundred more per month. Can you tell me why such a delta between Salem and Albany?
Well, it's just depends on how each community structures their rates, so. This question comes up sometimes. Slide maybe, maybe this one. So the way the low income program for water works is the customer receives. Oh, I believe it's their first four units of water free. So they pay a base charge and then they don't pay anything for the first four units of water. Somebody, Jeff Babett or somebody is going to have to pipe up if I got that wrong. And then any water they use beyond four units, they pay the regular rate. But most people that you would think of that might be elderly. Or small families and low income situations can usually get through a month without using more than four units of water. And we have three people in my house and we average five, so.
I, I would like to see what it would look like for sewer and stormwater as well for those things affected individuals. If we can give them some kind of a break on their fees as well.
Yeah, we can definitely bring something like that back to the council. It would require creating a whole new low income assistance program for those types of customers. So it's going to take probably a little more time than we would need to get these rates implemented. But we can definitely bring that back after we have a chance to work on how it would work.
Thank you, thank you, Director, Councilor Novak had a question or a comment?
Yes. Thank you, I couldn't help noticing that the restaurant rate was way. The other cities that you were comparing as well, and I'm, I find that a little bit concerning in the times of COVID. When certain restaurants, I'm just, I'm, I'm speaking for restaurants such as that which my sister owns. Have been so hard hit. You know, it's, it doesn't apply to fast food restaurants and drive ups and stuff like that. But I'm just, I'm looking at, at how, how much higher the restaurant thing is for Albany than for every other city. And I'm thinking, I'm not so sure that. A facility such as, as that that's been in my family for decades will be able to withstand this sort of thing. This degree of increase. With everything that we're going through right now with all the COVID regulations and the hardships and the particular ways that, that all the COVID is impacting us. Is, is there anything that can be done in terms of the restaurant situation? Or is there a way to, as the mayor was just asking with regard to lower income? Is there a way to look at restaurants and what kind of restaurant they are? And the degree to which they've been impacted and over the last year with COVID? Is there a way to look at restaurants and what kind of restaurant they are and the degree to which they've been impacted and over the last year with COVID? Drive-up restaurants, you know, um, some things haven't been impacted at all, but, but owned small situations such, such as ours and other restaurants like ours, they're hugely impacted.
Um, a couple of things come to mind. One is, this is, um, an example of one restaurant in town, and so it certainly is not a standard charge for every restaurant. It will totally depend on how much water, um, you use and, um, you know, how your charges play out based on your actual consumption, so that's one thing. Um, the, as far as, um, and assistance, there are um, there have been a number of programs from the state and through Business Oregon, I believe, that have offered some assistance, um, with the CARES funding that's been, uh, and the, and then the second and the third ax with whose names I can't remember. Um, for businesses who've been affected, so we might be able to do a better job of trying to highlight and point out some of that funding that's available. But there typically is not a, a low-income type program for commercial or industrial customers. Yeah, we can, I mean, anyone, any business owner, uh, that's concerned can also, you know, we can talk with them and try to see, you know, what the individual impact would be for these rate increases, but the increase is, is the same regardless of class of customer, so um, you might be able to sort of predict that based on your annual, I mean, sorry, your monthly utility payments that you're currently paying and then show those there, so.
Thank you.
Is that it, Council? Do you have more information or questions for, uh, Director Bailey, or do you want to go into this now, Director Bailey, or you're done there? Okay.
No, I have a, my last section, which I hope will be, uh, quick. So you have a chance to think of more questions, so. The last section is, um, five-year rate forecasts, and, um, I think this is, will be interesting to some of you because it, it gets into some of these um, history and looking forward of, in terms of, um, forecasting revenues. Um, so in Public Works, we maintain five-year rate forecasts for all of our utilities, and we use that to plan future work in both operations and capital programs. Forecasting is not an exact science, and so as I show you these numbers where we're forecasting out in future years, please keep in mind that those may change depending on changes in actual revenues received, um, unforeseen capital needs or regulatory costs. There we go. So, Councilor Olson, this gets to your question, so this is, uh, I'm gonna do this for each of the utilities, but here's a five-year history of sewer revenue. Um, and you can see that in fiscal year seventeen eighteen, there was a little bit of a dip in sewer revenue, and that was when we decreased sewer rates, um, as a result of stormwater rates going into effect. So there was a, actually a stormwater rate decrease in that year. Otherwise, the revenue has been, um, trending upward. The SDC revenue is a pretty unpredictable. It depends on the type and volume of, um, development that's happening in any given year. So we use an average to try to forecast what we anticipate in the next five years in SDC revenue. And then I'm gonna spend a little bit of time on this graph, which may be familiar to some of you, but it gets back to the question about why three and a half percent in sewer. Um, so, uh, what this graph shows is the breakdown of our debt payment for the sewer fund. The top line, which is dotted line, is, um, total debt service payment each year. The next line is the dash-dot line, and that is, um, the amount of debt that the sewer ratepayers are paying. The third line, which is the purple dash line, is the portion that SDCs are supposed to pay. And the bottom line, which is a solid line, is the portion that SDC revenue is actually paying. So when the debt for the water reclamation facility was taken out, a portion of it was assigned to rates and a portion to SDCs, because the facility was built to handle existing sewer flows and future sewer flows. The relative amount of the capacity of the facility designed for the future was intended to be paid for by SDC revenue because SDC pays for development and not rate revenue. But over time, SDC revenue has not been coming in, in an amount that was able to keep up with their fair share of debt payment. So years ago, we had a reserve of SDC funds that we used to pay for debt along with the current revenue, but those reserves are gone. This year and moving forward, SDC revenue is not going to come in in quantities that can fully pay its share of debt. So you can see the gap that exists for next year of about five hundred thousand dollars. That gap will be paid for by rate revenue. The gap gets wider as we move into the future, meaning rates will have to be raised more than they would need to be otherwise in order to pay the portion of debt that SDCs are not paying. Essentially, the more that rates have to pick up of the SDC portion of the debt, the higher the rates will have to go. So I'm gonna pause here because that's pretty complicated, and I want to make sure everybody gets it. But essentially, the debt has to be paid. And we tried to allocate way back when we took out the loan, how much we thought of the debt that SDC revenue, due to growth, would pay. And it has not been adequate. Go ahead, Councilor Johnson.
Yep. Chris, I just want, what you just said, uh, that we had reserves and now they're gone. Uh, just to be clear, are they, they gone because there was nothing to backfill the reserves as though they had to be paid, uh, into the, uh, well, what was owed, I think?
Yeah, so I, I want to be clear, make sure I'm saying that correctly. We still have reserves in the sewer fund. So, we have reserves in the capital fund, we have contingency in the operating program, so it's not like we don't have reserves.
Okay.
But years ago, we had a bank of SDC, uh, funds that we slowly drew down as we needed to supplement what we were currently receiving in SDC revenue to pay for this debt payment.
Okay.
So now there's no more specific SDC reserves.
Okay, thank you.
Any more questions? Okay. So the outgoing forecast or the, looking out to out-years in the sewer fund, um, this table shows previous three years of rate increases, which have been steady at three and a half percent. And then what we are forecasting for the future. So, three and a half percent, and then perhaps three percent in the out-years. And then moving over to the water fund, so this shows the last five years of water rate revenue. We did a similar, um, rate decrease for water when stormwater charge came online, so that's why it was pretty flat there in seventeen eighteen. Um, but then it's been gradually increasing over time. And this is SDC revenue, so still a little bit bouncy, but not quite as up and down as sewer revenue, and again, um, SDCs just depend on the number and type of development that, um, takes place. Um, there is not that same sewer or water debt graph as there was in sewer because we have debt in water, but we don't need to, um, but SDCs are keeping up with their, uh, portion, so we don't have that problem in water. So this is the rate forecast looking out, so we previously had five percent rate increases. Now we're down to three and a half percent, and hopefully can get down to three percent in future years. And then finally, we're on stormwater. Um, I only have a couple of slides left, so it's the good news. Um, this year, or this chart shows the five-year of rate revenue. Again, we started stormwater in fiscal year seventeen, and we only had about four months worth of revenue, so that's why that bar is so low, and then with planned rate increases has been climbing up, and, um, yep. And then this chart, um, this is, um, re-upping this chart from June two thousand eighteen. We had a conversation with council about the importance of stormwater rates. And at that time, the council was really, um, struggling with this significant rate increase that was needed for the stormwater fund. And this is what the council agreed to, which was, um, raise an additional one point four million dollars from where we were at that time. We're in year three of this, um, chart now. And so we're on track, and we anticipate that we'll meet our one point four million dollar target by year five. Um, if we continue with these rate increases. So here's the history and forecast on su- stormwater rates. Um, seventeen percent per year, which, um, by twenty twenty-four, we anticipate we'll meet our revenue target. And then we'll come back and discuss with tar- with council at that point where we need to be in a, another presentation just like this. Yes, Councilor Kupcinski?
Yes, uh, I noticed all your charts indicate that, uh, inflation is not included. Is there a reason we don't have a guesstimate for inflation to include in the process?
Well, um, I think the, um, the reason is because we want to keep the numbers. So, when we do this behind the scenes on our spreadsheets, we do account for inflation. But we want to keep the numbers, um, static in your mind, so one point four million dollars was the number we agreed to by fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And although that will work out to something more than that with inflation, which Jeff Babett can tell me what that number is, for purposes of being consist- consistent with the number in, in your mind, we have left it here. We can definitely change that.
I see, oh, you do it for sewer and water also, so I'm just wondering.
Yeah, we can present that a different way if you'd like. It's, we do do that in the background.
It's okay.
Okay. Okay.
Oh, so, Chris, I just wanted to ask you a question, um, has the, um, it seems like we're, you know, the city's growing and growing, and so I just wondered is there any extra revenue coming in because of growth? Um, i- it just seems like it keeps on the same plane, and, um, you know, we need to do this, of course, but has, uh, have we gotten more income because of growth?
Hmm, boy, that's a, I think, gonna be a complicated answer. Um, what I'll say is, um, you know, as development happens, those, um, properties are paying their appropriate SDC as charged, you know, as the council has said. So in that, um, sense, yes, growth has paid into the system, both in terms of paying for existing capacity and, you know, paying for new needed capacity in the future. Um, as far as like population, you know, um, there are definitely more ratepayers now than there were before, so I think that's also a component. And it would be great if some smart person could work that out and see how much that works out too, but I think generally the system is set up to capture, um, the new customers and make sure that they're paying their fair share, so the people that have been here for decades are not shouldering this burden.
Yeah, I, I was thinking that it was, it, the, you know, the new residents would be included in some of your graphs, so I was, I was just I was just wondering, thank you.
Yeah, that'd be interesting. We might be able to figure that out sometime and tell you as a G W S. Um, but I wanna leave you with this, uh, table again, so the key takeaway is our recommendation for the utility increases, and then this shows the dates when they're effective. Um, just to keep that in mind as well, they don't all happen at once. They're spread out throughout the fiscal year. And then the next steps would be that we would, if the council, so it's up to the council what you would like to do. And if you would like to go with these recommendations, then we'll bring back new resolutions, um, and have a public hearing in June, uh, when a lot of our other annual fees are adjusted and the budget is, is adopted. Um, and we can, or we can bring back more information if you'd like, specific questions answered between now and then. And that is the end of my presentation.
So, Council, what would you like? Thank you, Director. Um, what would you guys, what would the council like to do? Would you like her to come back on Wednesday with new resolutions, or would you have more questions for, for Director Bailey?
I don't think we have much choice. Thank you.
And actually, I'm, just to clarify, it'll be at a public hearing in June as we get closer to the budget.
Okay, so Wednesday, we, do we need anything from you for, for Wednesday?
No.
Okay, thank you. So we'll, we look forward to hearing more from you in June. Just thank you very much, Director Bailey.
Thank you.
Um, next on the agenda is, let me get back to my, so many of them. Uh, here we go. Next on the agenda is the Albany Transit Development Plan by Barry Hoffman. Um, I don't know what organization Barry's a part of, so forgive me for that, on page sixteen through nineteen.
Mayor, I'll just introduce Barry while he gets himself started. Um, this is Chris again.
Okay.
Um, Barry is our transit manager here at Albany Transit. He's been here, um, with the city for ten years, okay? And, um, uh, so he's in our transit office over at the REA building near the train station. If anybody ever wants to go visit, once the doors are open again, that's where you'll find him.
Well, thank you very much, Director. And Barry, I'd love to meet with you sometime for a couple of coffee.
Thank you, that sounds wonderful. Hello, Mayor and councilors, uh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Great, fantastic. At some point here, I'll, I'll share a screen so you can see, uh, some stuff, but very excited to be in front of y'all today, and we have some pretty exciting times in transit. Um, so, um, wanna go through my memo that, uh, was included in the pack. It basically gave, uh, kind of a detailed history of how we got to where we are today. Um, but just to summarize real quick, um, in two thousand eighteen, we, uh, completed a development plan for the transit system, and, uh, at that time, we realized that in order to develop the transit system, we were gonna need to purchase, uh, equipment, but basically buses, uh, to do that, uh, expansion. Um, and so, uh, we had the STIF fund, which was, uh, House Bill twenty seventeen from, uh, the state legislature, which dedicated, uh, um, state tax revenue to, uh, expanding transit systems, uh, in the state of Oregon, and, uh, in that first biennium of that, uh, STIF fund, we applied for, uh, buses, and well, those buses have just recently arrived, so, um, we're really excited to get going with our expanded, uh, transit system here. And, uh, so we have our plan that was developed in two thousand eighteen, and as we started to digest, redigest the plan, uh, we, uh, had some routes that were sketched out as a, as a placeholder in that plan. And we took a good look at those routes and really thought, hmm, we probably ought to revisit these routes, um, not only for our own sake, but for the public um, before we were to implement changes to, um, the routes that we've had. Uh, a little background, our, our system has been operating since the early nineteen seventies, the Albany Transit System, and, um, I've been here since two thousand oh-eight, so I guess that's a little more than ten years now. Um, but, uh, really, the system hasn't changed a lot since, uh, the nineteen eighties. Uh, the what has changed, of course, is the community, the traffic, uh, this, the, the area, um, that has been developed has changed significantly. Small changes have happened to the transit system, uh, Walmart went in and you know, we had to serve Walmart, so we changed our routing a little bit, went out, uh, to the Walmart area. Um, other development has happened, um, kind of around the transit system that's built, and, and so uh, just wanted to kind of go over a little bit of that, so, um, the COG has been deeply involved, the MPO, Metropolitan Plan, Planning Orga- Organization, has been, uh, deeply involved in helping us get the transit development plan, and they also are going to or have been helping with, uh, getting this call, a redesign of our routes, uh, in in, uh, format here. Uh, they've hired, we've hired Nelson Nygaard, which is a nationally-known, uh, transit planning group, a consultant group, and they're helping us get, um, helping us get, uh, uh, routes in front of the public here, so everyone can join in and, and see, uh, what it is we have planned and kind of vote on their favorites or talk about what they like, what they don't like, and then, uh, when we do implement cha- changes to our service, everyone can, can, um, we'll, we'll get the best of what, what, uh, what the community can get here. Um, with that said, I want to share my screen because I'm, I am pretty excited. Um, hopefully I can do that correctly. Hopefully I can do that correctly. I got it here, I think. So can you see those pretty buses?
Yes.
All right, fantastic. So those two in the center there are two of our brand new buses. They are so new, they're not on the road yet. We have some last minute equipping to do when they get here, like put radios in, simple stuff like a garbage can and And it takes some time to get those buses, once they arrive to out on the road. So The last one arrived last week, Tuesday, the last one of four. And so this is, these are two here that I'm showing you pictures of. And I'll kind of scroll through a couple of photos so you can See, there's my excited transit drivers oohing and aahing over the brand new buses. And That's at the public works yard. So basically, what I want to do is invite everybody to Join and I guess what might be best called is an open house. Where routes, route options are going to be presented. And people will be able to provide feedback. And that's the purpose of why I'm in front of you. Also with us is Steph Nappa from the COG, and she is going to share some Some more information about this public outreach process. But let me scroll through a couple more pictures and then show you a couple more things that are Exciting in transit right now. It's really, really, really pretty buses. And if you notice this slight smile on the front of that buses, that was Purposefully done by yours truly, the happy bus going down the road. So Really, really nice equipment that we're getting here. There's Chris standing in our brand new bus. And then a beautiful picture of the river here. I'm going to get out of that. So one of the other things that has happened, we've been working on is real time bus information. This actually comes from the Loop website. But from the Loop website and from the Albany Transit website, you can see our bus in real time moving down the street. That obviously that circle is the bus. And there it is moving down the street. This happens to be the Route Two. And if I was to click on any of these bus stops here, It'll tell me about approximately how long it'll be until that bus gets there in real time, right on our website. There's also an app that has been developed. It's a third party app called Transit App that anyone can download to their phone. It's available on both Apple and Android devices. So Transit App. And that will do the same kind of transit planning. I'm just showing you. If you're waiting at Fred Meyer here And you click on it, it's going to tell you 15 minutes for the bus. That's about, about in real time. It also takes into account real time traffic. So it knows, it's kind of smart, knows about how long it's going to take that bus to really get there. That's pretty exciting, a big change in what we've been able to offer the public. Let me see, I had one more thing. Anyway, that was, that was that. Another thing that you're going to hear about, you're going to hear more from me In the near future is, I don't know if you're aware, but our transit bus barn is behind the fire station. Let me make this a little bigger. Behind the fire station. And basically, these green circles are our bus fleet, or where our bus fleet is going to be parked. And the blue circles where our drivers are going to wind up having to park. And I guess the The message I want to send home is we're out of room. And not only are we out of room, but we're taking up room that the fire station would desperately love to use for their training ground. So we will be back to talk in the future about A new bus facility that we're planning. And we have some grants that we're going to be applying for To help get that facility off the ground In the near future. I don't care to give an estimate, but sometime soon to a council near you. So with that said, Steph Nappa, are you here? Do you want to come in and say some stuff about the plan?
Yeah, so I think I'll have Nick Meltzer, the COG Transportation Manager, just talk a little bit about The relationship between COG and the Albany Area MPO and why we're involved in this project. So Nick, why don't you go first?
Thanks, Steph, and thanks, Barry. Would you mind stopping sharing so we can see everyone's face? Thank you. Well, so good evening, everyone. My name is Nick Meltzer. I'm the Transportation Manager at the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments. I know some of you from various boards and committees you sit on. So it's nice to see some friendly faces this evening. At the Oregon Cascades West Council of Governments, we do a couple of things in the transportation section. One thing is we Staff the Cascades West Area Commission on Transportation, which Counselor Olson's a member of. And then we also staff the Albany Area Metropolitan Planning Organization, which Counselor Kupcinski and Councilman Novak are on. And the Albany Area Metropolitan Planning Organization is a regional body. It's made up of the cities of Tangent, Albany, Millersburg, and Jefferson, and then parts of Lynn County. And basically, we're a federally designated planning organization that's intended to help the cities plan For transportation across the region. And really, the kind of the driver behind that is Once you reach a certain size, people no longer live and work within their same city. And so it's important to think about how people travel across the region, not just across one city. And so the Albany Area MPO, we get money each year from the federal government to perform these regional planning activities. There's a number of required things we have to do, but we also get some money to do some projects of our choice. And so for tonight, we're here talking about the Albany Transit Implementation Strategy. And as Barry mentioned, back in 2018, when we developed our regional transportation plan, Which is one of the required documents we need to prepare, we included a transit development plan for the city of Albany. And that's really a 20-year long range plan that looks at how to grow transit over time. And then a few years after that, the state passed House Bill 2017, which was basically a big influx of money for transit. And that's caused a lot of agencies to really accelerate their timelines. So basically, the city of Albany is going to be able to reach their medium term Plan that was outlined a few years ago, really within, you know, one to three years as opposed to five to 10 years. But that planning process that happened back in 2018 is really conceptual. So it said, You know, here's a short term plan, here's a medium term plan, here's a long term plan. The details will be figured out later. And that's really what we're talking about today is, you know, we have a starting point for what we thought the medium term plan should be. But really, we want to figure out what those details should be. And we really want to work closely with the public to get their input. So that's just a little background. And then I'll hand it off to Steph to talk about some more details on the project.
Thanks, Nick. Good evening, Mayor and councilors. I'm Steph Nappa. I'm a transportation planner at Oregon Cascade West Council of Governments. And I'm the lead staff for this project that we're working on to support the city of Albany and improving the transit system. So we've kind of gone through the background of why we're doing this project and kind of where the funding comes from In that background. So I'm going to talk about the goals that we have for these improvements As well as the public outreach process that we're going to be going through. So starting with the strategy goals. We, there was a onboard survey in 2014 that asked Albany Transit Riders what their Top improvements were. And that survey kind of formed the foundation of that 2018 Transit Development Plan that Nick and Barry referenced. And we're also kind of using that as the foundation for planning out these improvements. I think we're going to have two to three different like route maps, Transit maps that we're going to present to the public. So those are our different alternatives that we're considering. And the top goals from the public that were requested were more frequent service at Across the system and then service later at night. So there's, you know, there's some other popular, popular or Requested improvements, but those are the two that we're really focusing on right now. And then Albany Transit staff as well had some improvements That were important to kind of increasing the functionality of the system and just making it a better experience for riders and the drivers as well. So One of those is improving on time performance, which is a little bit of an issue now. Making sure that the routes account for school and commute traffic that happens At specific times of the day, making sure there's appropriate break locations at the, for the drivers where The buses have layovers and transfer points. And then changing from the current routes, which are circular in nature, to the linear, like out and back style Routes that are more beneficial for the public and for the riders, because you don't have to Ride the system all the way around to get back to your destination. You can, you know, go one stop and then go back home. If that's what your, what your trip is. So Those are the, the goals of what we're trying to accomplish. But of course, Even with the increased funding, it's not enough to do everything that we want right away. We are hopeful that, you know, as additional state funding comes through and Hopefully more federal funding comes through, that we'll be able to pick a, pick a scenario that is easily scalable. So Even if there's one that doesn't meet all of our, you know, ideal goals right now, it'll be easily scalable to Achieve more of them in the future as additional funding becomes available. So Additionally, to making those improvements that I mentioned, we also don't want to Cut the service from any place that currently receives service. So we're making sure we're maintaining The span of coverage across all the destinations in town that are currently served by transit. So those include the North Albany Shopping Center, the Samaritan General Hospital, and The Senior Center Downtown, Heritage Plaza, the Winco Coles, Costco Shopping Center, Walmart, and then also increasing service out to East Albany where there's a lot of new housing development. Making sure we continue service to the South Albany High School and the kind of the southeast portion of Albany. And then, of course, Lynn Benton Community College, which is the highest destination point for Albany's transit system. So we're looking to have at least one, maybe even two routes that go out to LBCC. So as we're presenting these different alternatives, I guess we're going to have two or three different route maps that we'll be bringing to the public On April 26th. So at the end of the month here, we'll be launching an online website for People to review those options. We're going to have kind of an intro video and, you know, written description of the project. About, you know, why we're, why we're doing this and kind of what improvements we're, we're hoping to achieve. Maps of the, of the proposed alternatives and then a feedback comment form or survey To gather input and see which, which option members of the public like best. And we're going to have everything in English and Spanish. And then, you know, depending on what our feedback is, Albany will be able to implement Those, those, the new service this summer, which is a much shorter Project implementation timeline than I'm used to on many of my projects. So In addition to our kind of general public outreach, which as Barry said, you're, we encourage you to participate in that. Ask your constituents to participate in that. We're also doing some direct outreach to some transit stakeholders. Department of Health Services, Senior Disability Services, Greater Albany Public Schools, Lynn Benton Community College, our regional transit Systems that intersect with Albany's systems. That includes the Lynn Betton Loop, the Lynn Shuttle, and the Coast to Valley Express. Probably going to be connecting with our Latinx populations through the Lynn Benton Hispanic Advisory Community. And then connecting with some homelessness service providers as well. So if there's any questions about kind of the goals that we're trying to achieve or how we're doing the public engagement, happy to answer any of those.
Yeah.
I didn't see West Albany High School stop in there, the bowling alley. That along that route?
Right now, I think that area is served kind of down Elm Street, and we're maintaining service down Elm Street. So that's as close as we get to To West Albany High School and the middle school there. And so we're kind of maintaining that same service. Trying to think about the different maps in my head.
There's a stop currently in front of the bowling alley on the Pacific.
I can't remember if all of the, if all of the routes that we have hit that bowling alley. I guess we'll have to see once, or yeah, take a look at the routes once the engagement site is live. And yeah, if there's a place that we've missed That you really think needs to have service, that'll be the place to tell us. And Counselor Johnson?
I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. Okay, anyway. I think redoing the bus routes is a great idea. The only thing I ask is to, and I'm sure Peter and Holly and everybody's going to do this, but to let us know when these things are happening So that we can participate. I, I know I have heard people say, well, you know, the bus doesn't go by me. I mean, I live on Geary Street And I don't know if I've ever seen a bus go by. You know, other than school buses. So, you know, the South, the south and east part of town, you know, is Very busy and they got a lot of apartments and stuff like that. So I think the redoing of the Roots and stuff is really good. And Barry, I love the idea of the smiling buses.
I, I'm still here. And I actually, if I, if I can have another second to share my screen, I remembered the other Screen I wanted to share with, with everyone here. I'm sorry, but so sharing now, hopefully you can see This, what I have in front of you is essentially what our day service looks like. And we have, it's two routes. One route on the west side of town, which is the red route, and one route on the east side of town, which is the blue route. And that is two buses. Can you all see that? I see.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. So it's basically run with two buses, two bus drivers run this from nine AM until six o'clock in the evening. In the morning, there's a different bus on a different route that operates. And so Counselor Johnson, yes, if you're on South and the Geary Street, you may never have seen a bus go by your house because there's no route that goes by your house. Anyway, This is essentially what we've had for, since the 1980s. This runs on an hour headway On each side. And they connect in a couple of places, one being on 32nd and Jackson Street, and one being at the train station where the routes intersect And make a transfer. So people can get from one side to the other side of the community. A couple of concepts that will be introduced is The coverage. So what we have currently, we have coverage of the city. We actually cover the city fairly well. You can get most of the main destination points to the other destination points by using the system. Then you have span, which is how many hours a day do you operate? Span would be, do you operate from 6:00 AM to 9:00 PM? Do you operate from 9:00 AM to 6:00 PM? Obviously. And then you have frequency. It's how often does the bus come around? Could it come around every 30 minutes? Could it come around every 45 minutes? And then another concept that's really important is on time performance. So I can tell you, these buses, these routes that were developed in the 80s are really good at covering the city. But it's really, really hard to do that in an hour now. Especially at certain times of the day. So That has been taken into consideration with the planning of the routes that we're going to be introducing. And it's possible that routes may look a lot like this, but not be done in an hour. Maybe come around every, I'm just throwing it out there, every 75 minutes, a bus would come around. Which is great for the bus driver and for the bus system to be on time, but really hard for a customer To understand when the bus is going to go by their stop. Which is why those apps and the, and electronic ways to get your schedule are going to We also have paper schedules, of course, but are more and more important as time goes on. So frequency, span, and coverage are things that you're going to see or hear about in that, in that planning effort here.
Yeah, that's great. Because when I first moved here in 88, I lived in the Lehigh area. And I would have to, we only have one vehicle. My husband worked and I did. So I had, I went to the Rite Aid, where Rite Aid is now, and I caught the bus there and it took me downtown to the bank across from the courthouse. So It worked out real well. I was only 15 minutes late for work, but then I made it up otherwise. So it can, you know, it can be done. And I just look forward to All the improvements that are going to happen. So thanks.
I think the rollout of the real time app is going to, is going to be real, real fabulous to have.
That's, I believe, I agree with you, Counselor Kupcinski. Thank you, Matt.
Mayor, if I could just say, Steph, could you remind everyone when the open house and things are going to be available?
Yeah, it'll go, the website will go live on April 26th. And it will be, we'll probably have it up for about a month For comments. So, you know, as people have time to check that website and learn about the project and kind of think about Which option they like best. And yeah, as Barry mentioned, you know, there's those, kind of those three different criteria. And each, each option kind of has a trade off of the different ones. So We'll, I'm curious to see what the, which ones the public prioritize. So we'll, I'm curious to see what the, which ones the public prioritizes most, and which one we'll be able to implement.
So Counsel, we'll share that with you in probably a number of ways, and then probably also work with Matt to get that out on social media quite a bit. So try to get as much input as we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Steph. Thank you, Director Bailey. Thank you, Nick. Thank you, Barry. Appreciate it.
Thank you for your time.
All right, Counsel, on to the next thing. It's updated language for the Human Relations Commission Director, Partial Director, Kim LaDane will be.
Air, I believe you've skipped the Kurt Sorty.
Oh, I'm sorry. Kurt Sorty easement agreement, follow-up with Matt Rutgers. Thank you, thank you, Peter.
Good evening, and Mayor and Counsel. If Matt, if I could share my screen, that would be great.
Go for it.
Okay. Hopefully, everybody can see that. So I'm, I'm back tonight to discuss an easement agreement with, between the city of Albany and Mr. Kurt Sorty. So back in June of last year, Counsel provided direction to staff to prepare an agreement for a review with, with the Counsel. The agreement would actually set conditions by which the city would grant an easement to Mr. Sorty. And I realize there's, there's several new Counsel members, so I thought I'd give a really brief overview of the, the need for an agreement slash easement here. So if you can see on the screen, there's, there's actually two parcels that are owned by Mr. Sorty. One is in Lynn County in front of Oakville Road, and the other is just on the other side of the Calipari River, and it's actually in the city of Albany. Apologies, I'm kind of looking back and forth between screens here. So the parcel on the east side of the river is actually landlocked and doesn't have a legal access to right-of-way. So some of the challenges that Mr. Sorty has had is, you know, getting access to that parcel. Obviously, building a bridge across the Calipari is not really a viable option. So we, we came to Counsel after working with, with Mr. Sorty, and their Counsel had agreed to, to provide a, an agreement to, to provide an easement down the road. And the reason for some of that, well, let me back up. Some of the challenges with, with the easement, they're not actually shown on this map, but there's a good amount of wetlands and floodplain that he's going to have to, somebody's going to have to cross to get access. And these parcels are actually owned by the City Parks Department. This is Moose Run here, where the access would be taken. Mr. Sorty has actually got an interest in, in selling this piece of land. So the, the agreement didn't necessarily work that well for him. We went through the, the process of drafting one up, and, and then after giving it some more thought, and him expressing his interest in, in basically just selling the piece of property, we kind of are shifting gears a little bit with the thought of, of just creating an easement to provide legal access at this point. So by doing that, we would essentially create a proposed easement that would come off of Moose Run. It would just be an, an easement in, in paper form only. They wouldn't actually be building anything. A future purchaser of the land would actually, well, one, they'd be able to purchase the land once the easement's created, because the, the ability to get financing on a piece of property that doesn't have a legal access is challenging at best. So by creating the, this, this easement, somebody could buy the property. And then down the road, there's a good amount of consulting work that'll need to be done to identify wetlands, floodplain, as well as the buildable site on this lot. At that time, there'd be provisions in the easement to allow by mutual agreement to adjust the location of the easement. So it's kind of the, the, the change from the original direction we were taking of doing an agreement that ran with the land to just creating an easement at this time. So at this point, you know, Steph's here to ask you to kind of deliberative, desired, inappropriate, direct staff to, to prepare an easement document as I've described. Staff would bring back this, this final easement documentation to Counsel for authorization to execute once it's prepared to the satisfaction of the city attorney and Mr. Sorty, here to answer questions that you may have and, and look for your direction.
Also, thank you very much, Matt, Matthew. Counsel, do you have any comments or questions?
I do. Matthew, yeah, Matthew, I was just wondering, there's no, okay, with the yellow mark, that's the easement. Now, is there any road or anything there? I mean, you said nothing's going to be built, so is it just like going over part, grassland or something?
Yeah, so, so the yellow, the yellow that you see on the map there is kind of the shortest route possible off the end of the right-of-way of Moose Run. It's not to say that an easement couldn't be, or an actual access couldn't be done in that location. It's not all that, all that different than when you see like a subdivision with, with planned roads. You know, initially, that, that tentative subdivision just is on paper, which is what this would be. When it came to actually building it, there's going to be permitting associated with that. So we've, we've selected this location basically just out of the shortest route possible. Now, if somebody were to purchase this property and come in and determine that maybe the best buildable location for a home is at the, say, northeast corner of the site, just to pick one. Well, this route may not be the best. It may snake around here a little bit more through more city property. At that time, they'd have the option to come back to, to Counsel and ask to, to change the easement. The, the problem that we have is until the consulting work is all done, and, and probably some remapping through FEMA, to be honest, there's no way of predicting where that, that easement's going to go. So at this time, it's, it's just kind of creating this, you have a, a legal access to access, or to, to get to a public right-of-way. Whether that, that's buildable, you know, any, anything's buildable with the, the right amount of money and, and a good engineer. But, you know, there's a, a lot of work that would need to be done in advance of that.
Yeah. Yeah, it, it's just a little confusing to me, and I'm not exactly sure if it's a good thing to do. I mean, it's kind of pie in the sky type thing if he wants to sell it, but then easement might go somewhere else. So I'm interested in hearing what everyone else.
And, and to clarify, the, the initial direction we've gotten for the, the agreement was, was very similar to what we're proposing. It's just we're, we're kind of eliminating the step of the agreement. You know, the, the direction we were given before was to create this, this agreement for an undisclosed location based on wherever the consulting work that would eventually be done places the best location for it. So it was, it was really kind of broad. The problem that Mr. Sorty runs into is it's really hard to obtain for a purchaser. It's going to be hard for them to obtain any sort of funding or loan for the property based on an agreement or like a promise, which is what the agreement would be, to provide an easement. Until there's an actual legal access, albeit kind of on paper, it makes it pretty difficult.
Counsel Olson?
Yeah, if we're going to consider this, I'd like to see a written report. And I'd like to have some indication of who owns property where and what. And I'm actually kind of lost as to where we are here, so.
So the.
I need, I need a little more definition before I can express any opinion on this.
Sure, and I, I can back up one slide here. If we see the, the parcel highlighted in red, that's Mr. Sorty's property. This is down off of Fifty Third, down the subdivision that was created down there at the end of Moose Run, and then in between the end of Moose Run and Mr. Sorty's property, this is all city-owned tracks through here that were, most of them dedicated as part of this original subdivision.
So that's the Calipari River, I guess.
Correct, that's the Calipari.
Well, that helps. And what's the housing development on the other side of the river? That's pre nineteen seventy, I guess.
Yeah, that's, so the, the designating line between city limits and Lynn County is the Calipari River. So this is actually the subdivision you're referring to, Easy Avenue is, is over in Lynn County.
Okay.
You got, Counsel Olson?
Oh, that's, you know, dwell. I, I'm still kind of confused. Like I say, I'd like to see a written report of some sort for me to consider seriously.
Thank you. You got that, Matthew?
Yeah, and, and what we can do, depending on which direction the Counsel would like to go, if, if we're directed to, to go forth and kind of prepare an easement. With that, when we came back, we can, we can bring a written report with a, a lot more detail of the surrounding properties for you, Counselor Olson.
So do we own that little wedge there? Do we own the big chunk above the wedge?
So this little, this, if this is the little wedge you're referring to, I'm not sure if you can see my mouse or not. That's actually what appears to be a gap in the deeds. Shows up on the assessor's map, haven't, haven't done a detailed research into that gap exactly, so.
Thank you. So Counselor, Counselor Marilyn Smith was first. Counselor Smith?
I, I just want to know what the acreage is of that parcel. I can't read it on the map.
It's fourteen point five nine acres.
Thank you.
Thank you, Marilyn. Counselor, Counselor Kapetsky.
Yes, just north of Moose Run and around the full outside edge of that development off of Fifty Third is a real nice creek trail, very nice walking trail. So I hope the easement will not be any kind of a blockage to that. That is a very nice, nice trail to walk on.
There, there would certainly be provisions for protection of that trail in the easement document. And I, I should have mentioned, you know, the, as Counselor Smith had noted, was asking the acres of the parcel. This, this parcel is actually zoned open space. It is allowed to have one single-family home built on it. Other than that, there, you couldn't, you know, some developer couldn't buy this land and build fifty units. It will, by our code, it will only ever have one single-family home on it if, if, if they're able to build a driveway to it.
Thank you, Matthew. Counselor Novak?
Yes, thank you. Forgive me if I missed this information, but this is coming to us from Mr. Sorty, who owns the property, so that he might have an opportunity to sell it. Am I understanding this correctly?
That is correct, and, and Mr. Sorty had, he attended the, the first Counsel meeting when we were discussing an agreement. So he's, he, he certainly is, is committed to doing this, and, and he had asked about being at this one tonight. I told him it probably really wasn't necessary.
Thank you.
Other Counselors have any comments or thoughts? What would you like Mr. or Matthew to do with this? Would you like him to come back with more information as Counsel Olson requested?
Yes, I, I would.
With the draft document for the easement?
I just want to know that only one home could be built on this, that it has been zoned for open land. And is that at all subject to change with the development of an easement or permission for the easement? Would that be subject to change?
The, the land's designator is zoned open space. Is that only through a provision in our code? If, if a property was legally created prior to July one of ninety-one, that you could build one single-family home on it. And that was honestly one of the challenges, why it's taken a good amount of time to come back to Counsel, was the first hurdle that Mr. Sorty needed to cover was actually establishing that this was a legally created lot prior to that ninety-one date. So he's, he's actually went to a, a good amount of effort and expense through the county and hiring surveyors to make that determination, which he does have now, that it was legally created prior to July one of ninety-one.
Thank you, thank you, Matthew. Excellent. So Counsel, we're going to have, or do we want him to come back with the draft easement and some additional information regarding the property? It looks like everybody's nodding yes. Give me a thumbs up.
Okay. I, I can't read the red printing on the green background.
Yeah, please bring that back, please, Matthew.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next on the agenda, and I apologize for skipping you earlier. Next on the agenda is Director LaDane Parks and Recreation on the updated AMC Language with Human Relations Commission, on pages twenty through twenty-two.
Your Honor, I think this, I think this might be taking a little while. Could we take maybe a five or ten-minute break and then come back?
A bio break? I think that's acceptable to me. Everybody agree with that?
Yeah, please.
Take, take seven minutes.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
While we take the bio break, can I double-check to make sure my microphone is actually working?
Working just fine.
All right, I had a second computer all queued up, just in case we went sideways, so, thank you.
Counselor Johnson? Counselor Johnson?
I'll go ahead and test my mic again.
Yeah, your mic's working just fine. Thank you. Oh, Counselor Johnson's back with us. Thank you, Counselor Johnson. So as we started before, um, updated um Optimism Code Language for Human Relations Commission, uh Director of Dana will be presenting on the languages on twenty and through page twenty-two. So that Director of Dana, the floor is yours.
Excellent. Thank you so much. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, I am happy to be here tonight to present a revised language for the Albany Municipal Code in regards to the Human Relations Commission. To give a little bit of background, uh, the commission has been on hiatus since August of twenty twenty, as our previous council wanted uh the new council to take a look at the current um municipal code and and make recommendations uh so that the group would be able to proceed forward as um as, as needed. And so um the group has been, the commission has been very anxious to get back to work. Um, and I'm happy that we were able to have a joint session both on February twenty-fourth and March twenty-second with City Council, um where we were able to talk through a lot of the vision, um hopes, dreams, concerns um with Dr. Greg Hayman, uh, um, which is greatly appreciated. And from our last meeting on March twenty-second, the mayor had went ahead and designated a small work group to go ahead, come back, take a look at the language and make um a proposal. And what you see in front of us is the proposal from that small work group um that comprised of the mayor, um Counselor Smith, Counselor Bartholomew, um and then uh three commissioners, Commissioner Miave, Commissioner Newton, and Commissioner Chartier, as well as myself. So um we met on April uh fourth, no, I'm sorry, April second, um and, and had a, a really productive um session. And so what you see before you, um, let me actually share the screen so that I can make it a little bit easier to talk through is what our purp- the, the proposed language is. Um, and so I'm gonna kind of go through and, and just um point out what has been added, what has been deleted, what has been rearranged. Um, and I also invite, um, as I'm speaking on behalf of this work group, but as questions come up, um, if one of the counselors or commissioners who are present in the work group has something that they would like to address um in response to a question from council, uh, please let me know. So I guess I should say one last thing. The goal is for us to review this this evening with the hope that uh we would be able to um uh, you know, have an ordinance on Wednesday night's meeting to be able to approve dra- the updated language so that the Human Relations Commission would be able to meet this month um and and get to work. So, before I get going, any questions? All right, away we go. So the first thing that we decided to do is add a definition section. Um, definition sections are used in other areas through the municipal code. Um, as we know that a lot of words carry meaning, um, and we want to be very specific in what these words that we're using mean. Um, so the, the two point two five point zero 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 definitions has been added um to which uh we spell out what acceptance, accessibility, dignity, diversity, equity, and inclusion are, are to be understood as, as we read through this paragraph. Uh, uh, sorry, not paragraph, through the rest of the code. So that is a brand new section. We did not change the established section, um but we looked really hard at the purpose. Um, and so you'll see quite a bit of uh language that's been strike through. A lot of that actually ended up moving down into duties and responsibilities as we felt like it was a little bit clouded. Um, and so we wanted to have a very succinct, succinct purpose. And that is to foster a city that is stable, safe, and just. The Human Relations Commission is established by the Albany City Council. The commission is established to strengthen and celebrate every resident of Albany by being committed to the philosophy of acceptance, inclusion, equal opportunity, accessibility, dignity, dignity, and fair treatment for all. So that is the, the proposed differences um in, in the purpose section.
Okay, when, how, when do you want questions asked?
Uh, Mayor, would you like to take them uh throughout the presentation, or should we wait until the end?
It's your, your meeting, your meeting right now, so whatever.
Oh, all right. Let's go ahead and I guess um go through them one at a time then. So, so please feel free to ask questions.
Okay, I do. Uh, first of all, the definitions, um, it's kind of vague. Um, number two is accessibility. It says uh usable, reachable, obtainable regardless of age, ability, or language. So does that mean that we're gonna put um, make sure that every language is obtainable in everything that the city does?
So in um, sorry, uh, work group, I'll try to tackle this, but if I've missed anything, go ahead and let me know. Um, that is what the goal that we would be reaching towards would be. Um, we do know that it wouldn't be possible to put every language on every poster, every sign, every website. Um, but the acknowledgement that we need to um try to provide more access um is something that the, the team wants to strive towards as well as provide recommendations back to council.
But you know, it's not, I mean, why put it in if you're not going to uh make it accessible to everybody? I don't, I just don't think that that needs to be in there. I mean, um, and then I'd go with number four. Um, it's um inclusion of individuals with different backgrounds, including but not limited to race, color, religion, sex, sexual orientation, national origin, marital status, age, ability, social, economic background. I mean, it's like, okay, that's a kitchen sink. And then number six is inclusion, is to include and integrate all people and groups and activities, organizational processes, political process, et cetera, especially those who are disadvantaged, have suffered discrimination or, or are living with disabilities. Everybody has the same opportunities, opportunities. Some choose not to put them into work. And so I just, I mean, and political process. Uh, why have that? Anybody can do, run if they want, they can get into all kinds of stuff. I just, uh, I, I think the um the definitions go, I mean, it just really, really has put in the kitchen sink and everything, you know, I mean, we're we're working for everybody. Not, you know, just not the underprivileged. Everybody has opportunities. Some choose not to put in the work to get them. So, okay, so go ahead to the next one.
So, we got other people that like to make a comment.
Okay.
I think Robin Davis was first, and then Chair Staff. Where you, Counselor Kupczynski, and then Counselor Novak.
Hey, everyone can hear me okay? Okay, um, so yeah, great. I think the wording uh overall is, is great. So you got, that's uh the part of the team did really, really good work there um across the board. I do think that on definitions, uh, I, you know, I agree, it is a kitchen sink concept as it should be. But in number four, of course, uh, you've got sex and sexual orientation, you don't have gender and gender expression. Even though it is not limited to, I realize that, I think with the national stage, well, part of the national stage, which, what it is right now, that it would be good to include language there about gender as well. That's it.
Thank you. And on that, I can provide a little bit of clarity. We went through and we looked at uh protected statuses as defined by Oregon, um, the state of Oregon. And then additionally, we added um socioeconomic background because we felt like that was an important one. So just to give some context as to where all of those individual statements come from, um, we pulled it from, from current uh language. But thank you, I've got that noted.
And Counselor, thank you, Commissioner, uh Commissioner Newton.
Um, fabulous. And you're welcome to turn on my video if you'd want. It was turned off when I, so I can't turn it on. Uh, but one second. Close my office, just in case my daughter comes in. The rules are, if the time that my, that, you know, you have a child, you know, that you, you, you don't want them to come in, that's when they're gonna come in, right?
Hmm.
I might as well close my office. So, Bessie, fabulous questions. Thank you for asking them. Um, one I wanted to get, so we talked about um the definitions here. So, Kim, you said you got these, the definitions from um, you know, sources wherever they were actually protected classes. So accessibility, so things are usable and reachable. You know, we have a aging population here in Albany. I want to make sure that, you know, things are accessible for folks here, maybe people with disabilities. Um, in addition to, so I also serve on the um Justice Justice Caucus here for this in Oregon. My, I, a, a big thing is making things accessible, and it's not something that's ever gonna happen overnight, right? But it's something we strive towards for a goal. And I understand, uh, feeling like this is kind of like a kitchen sink, but really this is what the commission is for, is um to be that gateway, that, that path um for folks that, you know, don't have as much access or don't know how to um get in, get in contact with their city councilor with the other forms of local government. And I think that maybe there, we could better clarify political process. Um, I'm not sure exactly where this um definition came from, but when I read it, I don't hear it as like someone running for office. I hear it as government is a political thing. And it, it's not like, you know, us helping candidates or endorsing candidates is being an access point for local government and in politics. So maybe we can revise that definition. But I think that we need to view this as, this is what, what the commission's for, um and what our goals are. It's kind of like saying, why are we including uh, you know, skateboards on the, on the bicycle commission or something, you know? So keeping it um succinct and on, on point where, where our commission's goals are.
So, so yeah, and I would like to, to comment, and we're taking comments, but this is a council work session, so this is not a, a discussion or a situation where there's gonna be huge debate. We'd like to get your input so we can make changes if we need to. Um, so thank you for your input. Uh, Stephanie, go ahead and finish, and I'll move on to the next person.
I was done.
Thank you. Counselor Kupczynski, and then Counselor Novak.
Well, I just wanted to just like to say kudos and thanks to the subgroup for doing some heavy lifting here. Uh, the language, you know, I, I have no problem with uh signing off on what the language says and, and the definitions that you have showing here. Uh, the proof is going to be, and how do we put this into practice? If it just becomes words on paper and gets dusty, and it was uh not, uh, the effort was not uh well, well thought out. I think it can be a, a very positive and very powerful uh commission, and I think it should be. So I'm gonna be all in favor of voting in favor of the uh articles as they are written.
Counselor, uh, Novak?
I'd like to yield to Counselor Johnson and then perhaps come back if I may.
Yeah.
Well, Counselor, Commissioner Miave had his hand up before that.
Forgive me, okay.
We give him an opportunity to speak.
Sure.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, fantastic. Sorry, I don't have the, the camera on just yet. Oh, start my video. Oh, let's see if that'll work. So I'm not sure if you can, I'm not sure if you can see me or not. Okay, cool, great. Human Relations Commission, I hear that you said that we threw the kitchen sink in there. But we want to be as inclusive as possible, right? Sure, it may be some of, some of these concepts are high-minded, but that's kind of what the goal of the commission is. Uh, maybe a different way to phrase that would be, uh, Counselor Johnson, who would you like to exclude from this? Because I, I personally want everyone in Albany to feel welcome. There are some people that have been marginalized in the past. We just want to expressly say, hey, we want to welcome them to Albany and to the Albany quorum. Not saying that anyone is less than, but bringing everyone up to equal. That's my two cents.
Okay, and, okay, I guess Counselor Novak, you know, uh, yields to me. Well, I should have said this at the beginning, that um this committee has taken up a lot of staff time and a lot of time to get going and whatever, has caused some real problems. And so my first comment should have been, this is a social vehicle, and I don't believe the city is the right garage. I mean, we have laws to cover almost everything that people want on here. And so, and if there's, they say there's, no one can get to uh have access to. If they don't have access to it, then they can find someone who can. I mean, everyone, there should be no special treatment. And, uh, you know, and this is a work session, and I just feel like this should be in another garage and not the city because some, as we go on through these things, there's a lot of things that, I mean, people that have called me, and I'll read those at the end, but uh, that's my feelings right now.
Thank you, Counselor.
Thank you. Um, you did say Novak? Did I hear you right? Okay, good. I didn't want to speak out of turn. Um, I think I understand what Counselor Johnson is saying, and there's, there's definitely an extent to which I agree with her in that, you know, as far as accessibility, ADA, we already have that law on the book. Um, as far as anyone, uh, regardless of, you know, pick one, it's, everything is already enforced by law, isn't it? Or I would, I guess that the question I would ask is what, what is it, or, or what group is it that doesn't have already? I don't know that the term's legal standing, but, but the, the right to come before a counselor or a, a mayor. Who, who are we turning away? That's part of my question is like, who, who, who have we ever turned away? I'm speaking for myself now, or the current members of the council, or the council in the past? Um, wh- why would we not hear someone based on? Why would we not hear someone based on their sexuality, or their skin color, or their, you know, pick one, or their gender preference? Or why would we, why would, when has this, what, what's going on that, that, that people can't come to a councillor or a mayor? And, and be heard? I, can I get a little clarification on that, what evidence we have of this?
I'll, I'll try to answer as best as I can. I think the intent is, folks, sorry, trying to collect my thoughts. Folks, have we been welcoming? Have we, have we, sorry, I apologize. Well, yes, there are things that are on the books that are, are legal precedent at this point. It doesn't mean that that is how, how the, how the world presents itself. And so we want to make sure the, the work group and the Human Relations Commission wanted to be that olive branch to say, you might not have felt welcome before, or you might not have felt like your voice was being heard, or you might not feel that you are, you know, regarded. And, and we just want you to know that, yes, you are, and we're gonna try to find ways to, you know, be accessible to you in case questions, comments, concerns, ideas arise. We want to be the vehicle to help, okay, help, help, you know, create those bridges.
So then the purpose of the commission, the purpose of the commission is so that people in the community, if I'm understanding correctly, people in the community can go to someone on the commission if they have any trepidation of any kind, and they can say, would you, would you help me reach out to X, Y, or Z, or get help in a particular area, because I don't feel like I can do that on my own? Or I'd like a little support in my efforts? Is that the purpose of the commission then? So that people have someone they can go to who, who will help them?
That, that's one, in my estimation, that's one aspect of it. Also, the commission's gonna be responsible for education, providing education to the city itself for people that's interested in learning about other cultures and other races and other genders, you know, gender issues, gender concerns, people that want to learn about the community at large. Also, events, it's gonna be an opportunity for us to get to know each other. And I think that's really important if we include definitions, that so no one's excluded. And yes, it is high, it's a high reach, but here's the deal. You know, I've been in Albany twenty-six years, and I still get discriminated against, and I wear a tie every day. So it's about education, it's about us being, having the commission that's a conduit for those that don't feel included, to be included, and also get education about what's here and always for them to enjoy and to be part of this community. It's a really big deal. So Councillor Smith, do you have something, something, Councillor Smith?
Mayor, you covered a lot of what I was thinking of, but the, the general comment that this is a, the, well, the Human Relations Commission is about human relations. It is a social, it's, it is a social matter, and it's a social matter because people are, people have chosen to live together in Albany. If we didn't have people, we wouldn't have a city. It is city business to make sure that the people who live here, or to attempt to make sure that the people who live here feel like they're part of the place they have chosen to live, that they're welcome here, that they're safe here. It's, it's not a standard thing that you would think of as city services, or it's not your typical law that's created to control behavior. It's an acknowledgement that different people live here, a variety of interesting, fascinating, intelligent people who have something to offer to everyone of us. And we want to make sure that we hear them, we want to make sure that we listen to them, that we help them when we can. And that's what the Human Relations Commission is about. I, I agree with Councillor Kopczynski that this could be an extremely powerful group. And it's at, at exactly the right time that we're reexamining it, retooling it, and giving them the ability to, to, to make a difference.
Thank you, Councillor Smith, the Commissioner Charcher was next, and then Councillor Johnson.
Yes, well, I would just like to point out that it, it's about perceived power too. And even though you may not feel like you have a lot of power, especially when you hear from your constituents about everything you did wrong, the perception is that people on the city council do have power, and that can be intimidating to those who have no homes or who have been discriminated against, or who have been, you know, singled out as, as being different. And so that's one of the things we're trying to do with this statement and with this ordinance, is to set up a, a place that they are safe to be able to say, I don't feel like I have much power. Can you help me amplify this a little bit because it's really affecting us?
Councillor Johnson, thank you, Commissioner Charcher.
Yeah, I'd say, you know, when I moved here, no one gave, rolled out the welcome mat for me. If I wanted to, you know, well, I got into politics, okay, I had two jobs, but I'm saying that this should be, okay, Miriam has, is working for a, an organization that, to me, that's what this is for. I mean, just because someone is intimidated to come to the council, my lord, there are, I mean, I didn't want to come to the council when I was here. So I just think that, I mean, this committee has caused more issues since it began. And I just really think that it needs to be a social issue that is handled in the private sector. We don't, we don't discriminate against anybody. And I mean, you know, so, I know, every, every, I've had a few things said about me and stuff, but you know what? Just because I think it doesn't mean I'm wrong. And I've had people call me about the same thing, and so if people don't feel, if they, I agree, we have a melting pot here in Albany.
We always have.
Exactly, so we don't need a Human Relations Commission on a city, on a city board to remedy whatever's wrong. And, and I agree with Matilda, I think, what is an incidence? What happened to a certain person that they couldn't come to any, you know, to anyone that is, I mean, is socially related, but if it's, if they've been discriminated against, or if they've been, you know, done wrong, then there are laws to, you know, to cover that. We shouldn't have to spend the staff time and city time to take care of that.
Yeah, Councillor Johnson, I need to get other councillors, the Councillor Bartholomew, go ahead, please.
Thank you, I really appreciate the opportunity to have conversation, further conversation, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. And this is an important issue for a lot of us in that, this is how I first got involved with the city council, is because the response to a request was vigorously denounced as important. And the way that, that people were treated when they were sharing their stories of their difficult experiences here in Albany, and the way that they were treated in response to that was so disheartening. And that is the situation that I think the Human Relations Commission has the ability to address. At, at that time, it seemed like there was an educational component that was lacking in the members of the city council who, to understand the life experiences of the people that were speaking. And so I'm very appreciative of this opportunity to contribute to the understanding of what the Human Relations Commission's purpose is and to support the, the work that they would be doing. And that is to be a conduit of support for the community. I was welcomed to Albany, and I did not expect that welcome. And I really appreciated it. And it made a big difference. And so I would like that to happen for more people in this community. And I'd like to have that reputation instead of the reputation that that Al, that Albany had when I came here.
Also, thank you very much, Councillor Bartholomew, are you finished? Councillor Olson, you were next.
Yeah. And do I have the floor?
Yes, you do, sir.
Okay. Well, I am, I, I'm thinking that we shouldn't have a committee that's going to go out and looking for places that they need to burrow into and find problems that they can get concerned with. However, and I, I think that if there's individuals who think they're being picked on, that I, I think perhaps the committee ought to listen to them and advise them where they can go to talk to people that might give them some advice. But on the other hand, I think if there are groups in our city that feel that they're being mistreated, either by businesses or by the city itself, I think it's good to have a committee that those, that group can come and say, look here, we're being called names because there's a, a disease that started in our home country. And those of us that live here in Albany, we had nothing to do with that. And I think we ought to be, you know, there, there ought to be some kind of a comment as to, let's cease and desist. And I think you might get the impression that I'm talking about the Oriental Committee. And I don't think that's happening here in Albany, but it is happening in other places. And those places ought to have a Human Relations Committee that can say, now, wait a minute. We don't need to pick on these Oriental people because the COVID virus started in, or apparently it started in China. So I, I think this committee is a good thing to have. And I think it, again, I think it ought to be in the background, and if there's a need to discuss something that's happening to a given group of people, that they're there to listen to the complaint. And if they can, do something about it. So I'm in favor, I think the, I think the document that we have here for our Human Relations Committee, I think it's just fine, and I think we ought to proceed with it.
Well, I'm gonna take one more, I'm gonna give a director of the day, I see your hands, Councillor, Commissioner Newton. I, I think we need to wrap this up. So I'm gonna give Commissioner Newton, and I'm gonna go to Councillor Director Ladein, and we're gonna get to business.
Perfect, so I was actually also gonna, so I wanted to make one quick, quick, quick comment. So yes, I know Miriam works for an organization that is fabulous and does serve a certain subset of population, but so, experiment that I, experience that I have while I've been serving in the HRC is, I've had the opportunity, people have texted me or called me and said, hey, like, for example, my, a friend, Eric Roller, he texts me and said, hey, there's someone that I think is maybe unhoused. It's freezing, and they aren't wearing a shirt. What do I do, who do I call? And immediately I was able to connect him with a resource, but people don't know what all these resources are. And something we talked about is being like an, an area where we can, we can help educate and connect people with right resources. And I think that's really important, and it's part of having a safe and stable community here in Albany. And I, I think it's a privilege to do that. And then also wanted to suggest that, I wanted to make sure that Kim, Director Ladein, was able to get back to business.
So, oh, thank you so much, Commissioner. I have one more commissioner, and then we're gonna go directly to Dan, I didn't see his hand, I'm sorry about that. Commissioner Miyabi.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Real quick, wanted to address something that, that Bessie said that kind of resonated with me. She said, she said, Council, Councilwoman Johnson, I'm sorry, apologize. You said, no one welcomed me. And you, like, I guess, I could hear, like, the defiance and the pull yourself up by your bootstrap feeling about that. Appreciate that sentiment. But imagine how much easier life would have been if you had been welcomed. And if the spirit of Albany was one that did welcome you in here, and that your life wasn't made harder by the city ignoring you and you having to, to, to stand up for yourself, but if there was an environment that welcomed you and let you be, to let you reach your max potential faster, that's what the HRC is hoping for. You asked before, who are we, who are we even turning away? Well, you mentioned the Latino Festival, you said that you didn't feel welcome as a white person going to the Latino Festival. The HRC should, in its marketing, make it known that a festival like that, though it's celebrating one particular culture, that everyone in Albany would be welcome to it. I would want you to come have a churro with me at the Latino Festival. We want everyone in Albany to be at these kind of events, and the HRC, Human Relations Commission, we want those, we want to foster those good relations, because you know what? I've said it before, and everyone's locked, but tacos are for everyone. Not just people that see themselves as Latino. Those events are to foster those relationships. Specifically, if you didn't feel welcome before, I want you to feel welcome this year, absolutely.
No, it's not that I didn't feel welcome, it's just that it's for one group, it's, and it's basically, like I said, why not international? It's specified to one group, and that is
It's, it's not just one group, because I, like, I identify as a Hispanic, which might be a Latino, but I'm Mexican and El Salvadorian and American. So it's not just one group, I encompass so many different things. And it's not specifically raising up one thing, maybe we're just giving attention to a different kind of life that maybe you're not familiar with, and I want you to know a little bit about me, because I think that Rotary International sent me to Japan, and I think it is enriching to an average person to be exposed to a variety of different lifestyles. I think that's a net positive, and it goes to, it speaks to Albany that there are so many different lives and stories intertwined inside of Albany. And I think you would be a, you would find it more fulfilling, and just like there's spice in food, you would be, it would add spice to anyone's life, exactly.
I mean, I don't, I, you know, I, I, I don't care about the food or anything like that, it's the
I think you're missing the point.
It's the perception, you're missing the point, it's basically pointed toward Hispanics, there's no doubt about it. And if somebody comes here, they know what they're coming into, I knew what I was coming into, and I didn't expect the welcome wagon, so I'm saying, why
Why don't we roll out the welcome wagon? Like, you said, you know what you're getting to, what would you describe you're getting into?
But why don't they, why, why don't the groups, when they come here, like, take care of themselves? They say they don't, I mean, hey, there are drug addicts that know where the services are, so I, I can't accept that.
I, I do want to make one last statement, I do want to make one last statement. In regards to this being a social vehicle, government is for the people. It is, it is imperative for the city to strongly come out in favor of ideals encompassed in the charter of the HRC. Last year, there was a a foul incident of racist language written across someone's property. The city of Albany, it is, it behooves the city of Albany to strongly come out in condemnation of those kind of actions to let our fellow citizens know that they are welcome in this city, and that that kind of hateful rhetoric has to let our fellow citizens know that they are welcome in this city and that that kind of hateful rhetoric has no place in government. Or in, or, and that is not welcome in the city.
No, and that's what the
Thank you very much.
Laws take care of.
So, 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 okay, councillor Bartholomew, last statement from my councillor, and I'm gonna go to Director Ladein. Councillor Bartholomew.
I just wanted to make sure that we were including the gender expression in the final, gender and gender expression in the final copy. I think that was an important error or oversight.
Thank you very much.
To point out.
So, so, thank you. Councillors, would you like to have her come, can Dr. Director Ladein come back Wednesday with the final cut of the resolution? As written, with the additions that were requested?
I'm sorry, what are you asking for?
I couldn't understand you.
Director Ladein, are you finished with your presentation?
I, this was a good discussion. And while we didn't go through the full narrative, a lot of the things that were discussed in further paragraphs have already been addressed. And so I wanted to get direction if we needed to continue the conversation, or if we should just come back on Wednesday night.
Come back on Wednesday night.
Come back on Wednesday night.
And I, I don't, I think we should go through the whole thing. I mean, there's, there are issues on, on almost all of these, you know. Before you do that, I want to read just two of the statements that I got from constituents.
Can you do that through business from the council, please? Because this is not where we're gonna inject.
Well, this is, I mean, this is a work session and it's about the Human Relations Committee.
It wasn't submitted to council beforehand. It was not submitted as per the guidelines for the meeting, so.
But we're discussing this. And so why couldn't you want to know what people
I'd like, I'd like to hear the comments. Are they relatively short, Bessie?
Yes, they are. They're very short.
Council.
Go do it.
I'd like to hear.
Councillor? Councillor Smith?
It doesn't follow the protocol that we've established for business from the public. I would be willing to listen to it under business from the council, certainly.
But, but why not now when we're talking about the commission?
Well, it'll segue into the meeting on Wednesday.
So, councillor.
Procedure.
So will we ever hear these comments that
They submit them to?
That Bessie received.
They need to submit them to the city like the protocol states.
So they have to be formally written comment to the city to, for us to hear them?
She's gonna present somebody else's position. They need to have it submitted to the city for all
Here again, we're stiff-arming the public. And I'm getting really
I am too.
Exercised about this, I'll have to say.
I'm too.
I'm tempted to use a word starting with P, but I'm not going to.
You're not ever, not if, this is, this is like, okay, the committee that was chosen. All right, Mr. Mayor, and you know, and I don't want to offend anybody, but Matilda wasn't chosen for the committee. I wasn't chosen for the committee. We have different opinions. It seems like everybody that was on the committee basically had the same opinion.
Disagree.
Dick wasn't asked, you know. So just because you come up with this verbiage doesn't mean that it's right. I, you know, if I, if I could, if I had the votes and stuff, I would just table it.
Do you have votes? Councillors, councillors, what would you like to do with this?
Bring it back Wednesday for
Bring it back Wednesday for approval.
Councillor Bartholomew?
I agree.
Councillor Olson?
Another brief comment. One of our main goals is we're gonna have great neighborhoods here in Albany. And I think this committee is just the kind of thing to promote great neighborhoods. And we moved here and we bought a house in this, what was then pretty much of a slum. But we love the neighbors. Then we stayed. And it's somehow kind of blossomed. And I think it's mainly because we have great neighbors. And so I'm all for this committee. Yeah. And the way, it's fine the way it is.
You know, Mr. Mayor, just, just for the record, I would vote to table this discussion until three work sessions from now.
Noted. Thank you for that. Councillor Novak?
I, as I mentioned earlier, when I was asking for clarification about the purpose of the HRC, I do not, I, I don't have a problem with people who feel like they can't approach a council or a mayor themselves for whatever reason. They, they want to reach out to someone on a commission that they can relate to more and go through that person. I'm fine with that. I think that's, that's, I don't have a problem with that. The, where, in my heart, where, where things become a little bit trickier is when I read the language. And to me, it kind of presupposes that we're excluding people. To me, to have to say, we're not gonna exclude this person or these people or these people, that presumes that we are. And that's, that's where, in my heart, I'm like, what? That's not the Albany I know. And I, you know, lived most of my life here. So that's, and I, I, I think Albany should be welcoming and warm and inclusive. And as far as I know, I've never been presented evidence of people who've been excluded. I personally am on a first-name basis with some folks who are on the street. I, I just, I don't, I'm not, you know, I, I want people to feel helped. I want people to feel welcome. I want, if they don't feel like they can, and I have all kinds of people approach me. All kinds of people always have all my life, you know, and since being on the council as well. What can I say? I want people to feel welcome. I want people to know that we care. My, I guess my thought is, is the Albany I know and love always has cared and always will care.
Thank you. Thank you, Councillor Novak. So I have four people say, four councillors that would like it to come back with the changes to talk with Director Ladein. She'll bring that language back. Councillor Smith?
Councillor Johnson made a motion to table this discussion. That needs a second for it to move forward.
For the record, I just want to say, I'm, I'm not going to second a tabling because I don't know that that's necessary. But I want to say, for the record, I understand, I believe, to a degree, at least councillor Johnson's heart.
I, I think that there's nothing but welcome and inclusion. I think that what, if I
So, but
She doesn't want to see
Novak, but there's some amongst the city that disagree with you. They don't have the same shared experience.
I understand that. And that's why I'm not against the formation of a committee that would let people reach out to someone if, if they haven't, you know. And, and I can, I can say, if I didn't say this before, my, my, my parents had accents. And at that time, they were given a hard time because they were from somewhere else. And I took some crap as a kid. But, you know, I didn't take it to heart and let it harm me for the rest of my life.
There you go.
I just, I, I kind should people take some responsibility also. You know, I'm not opposed to having a group for people who feel that they need someone to walk alongside them. That's fine. Of course, we should do that. But I just think, I guess I'm advocating, and I think if I'm understanding councillor Johnson is people taking at least some degree of personal responsibility for how they respond if they feel less than kind, which is a horrible thing, but that's, you know, people are unkind sometimes. But there's a difference between unkind and, and doing something that's actually against the law. You know, if you, if you're putting expletives on someone's car or scratching it or painting something on their house, you should be prosecuted to the full extent of the law. Absolutely. But if you just got your feelings hurt, how about you grow up just a little bit? That's what I'm saying. There has to be a balance. That's all.
Thank you, Councillor Novak. So
Thank you.
The council would like you to bring back the language updated for Wednesday night.
Yes. Yeah, bring it back Wednesday.
Thank you. Director. Next thing on the agenda is a business from the council. So first on my window is their councillors, Commissioner councillor Olson.
I have nothing.
Councillor Kocenski?
Nothing.
Councillor Johnson?
Yes, I guess now is the timeline that I'm allowed to read this.
Yes, you are. Thank you.
Hey, one person said that the commission should have the power to report to the city just like any other committee, no more, no less. Their, their decisions must be approved by the council. Then the second one says the HRC is not, let's see, I read my own writing here, excuse me, should not be the controlling body of the city. They're not elected like councillors and mayor. The concern is what kind of power is this giving to the HRC? Because in the, in the language that we didn't get to, there's things about expenditures. They're thinking about what they're doing. And, and it's gonna take city money, city staff to do this. And right now, we don't have the frickin' money to do it. So I just think that it's a feel-good committee that can be handled by a private sector. And I
You still there?
Oh, I'm still, I'm still here, but I think I better just stop now.
Thank you. Thank you, councillor.
One, one other thing I want to say is, I heard you say, Mayor, that you don't agree with what Matilda said. Well, this is a conversation I had with one of the commission members. Just because you don't agree with me doesn't make me wrong.
I didn't say you were.
No, I know it. But this person did. And it's like, no. Just because you think it should be the, the society of kumbaya doesn't mean that it has to be.
Okay, councillor Novak? I can't hear you.
Yeah, I just unmuted. I'm sorry. I don't have anything, sir.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Bartholomew?
Nothing at this time. Thank you.
And councillor Smith?
Nothing.
All I have this evening, before we get to the city manager, is I'd like to thank the subcommittee for doing the work on the language. I'd like to thank the members of the HRC for working with all of us in the last two meetings. I'd like to thank Director Ladein, Greg Hammond, Dr. Hammond, Peter Trote, for his time when he's come and visited with us. Changes, these kinds of conversations are difficult. And I understand that. What we've seen, we've seen where different situations and different, different behaviors, different ideals have affected the city in a very negative way. We have an opportunity with the Human Relations Commission to bring this city together and relate to each other, understand each other, know each other, care for each other better. And we, as a city, we must move together, forward, better to each other. And the Human Relations Commission has an opportunity to foster those relationships. And for everyone in the city of Albany to live in a city that's stable, just and safe. And I think as we understand that and use the HRC to be a conduit for education and respect throughout the community, embracing all cultures, all shapes and sizes, all gender orientations and expressions, all races, all creeds, all backgrounds, I, I think we're gonna be richer for it. Yes, there's gonna be food involved. There's gonna be sports involved. There's gonna be laughter involved. There's gonna be crying involved. But if we don't do it together, if we continue to fight each other about a person's hair color or their skin color, or what kind of car they drive, we ultimately will not be better going forward. We must work together to be better together going forward. That's my ultimate goal. I want to know more about Matilda Novak's past. I want to know more about Stacy's, what she does. I want to know more about Bessie Johnson, her past. I want to know more about all of you, everyone on this call. We cannot do that if we don't get started on the work that's to come. And so being better together is really important to me and this city, at least me representing this city. And it's, it's time to get to work. So that's all I'll say today. Thank you very much for listening. And I'll turn it over to the city manager for his comments and what he has for us today.
Thank you, Mayor. And I want to echo your thanks to Dr. Hayman and to Kim Ladein for the effort that they put into this. So thanks, thanks to them. You'll recall that tonight was supposed to be a hybrid meeting for us. And I assure you, we have that capability. All seven of you elected to meet virtually, which is fine. That's the whole idea behind hybrid is you have the choice. And quite honestly, I must admit that I prefer to do this too when it comes to wearing a mask for two and a half, three hours. So we will go back to having virtual meetings until the restrictions are eased enough that we can stop wearing masks. And then we can get back in the council chambers. But again, I wanted to assure you that, that that capability is there. And then I only had one other thing. And I, I, I want, I feel kind of compelled to, oh, look at that. There is a picture of the council chambers that Matt has very kindly put up there. Okay, I, I, I do want to say something. It would be very easy to lose sight of some important things in the rancorous language that has popped up in social media over the last seven days. And I wanted to make a brief mention of four things. The first is that outreach to all members of our community is very important. And we aren't wavering from the work that Chief Hardin has been diligently pursuing to improve that outreach. Number two, children are very important. The next generation of our community is our, is our future. It's no exaggeration. And when we talk about investing for the future, there is no more important investment. Number three, our partnership with GAPS is very important. Our teachers, staff, and administrators are the ones entrusted with that precious investment. And we recognize that we accomplish more when we work together. And number four, our police department is very important. They face a difficult task on a daily basis. And we ask a lot of them at a time when the resources available to them and to the rest of the city government are in a relative decline. These are all important to me, and I imagine they're important to you too. We'll continue to work toward outreach to all of our communities, protecting all children, combining efforts with gaps, and supporting the efforts of our police department to protect our community. In the meantime, it's my sincere hope that bitterness and rancor will be replaced with kindness and empathy on our social media fora, various fora that we have. And, Mayor, that's all I have. Thanks for the opportunity.
Well, thank you, everyone, for your attendance this evening. An interesting meeting, to say the least. But I do believe we're gonna be better together going forward. And you all have a good night tonight and be safe and enjoy your families. And enjoy your dinner. Thank you much. We're adjourned.